Everyone, we're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Today is August 6th. We are having the meeting at, it's just after 8:30 a.m., or it actually is 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at Sierra Room, 851 East Williams Street. Where there's instructions on how to dial in if you want to do public comment. And we don't take public comment this, these days until the virus stuff goes away on each agenda items, so we'll be taking comment at the beginning and at the end. Okay, so let's go to roll call, please.
Supervisor Giomi.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Kroll.
Here.
The Quorum's present.
Can we call out our great, good friend Ken Haskins, the rockin' rev of the First Christian Church? Look at that, man. You look like you're ready to rock and roll.
Always.
Always. Let us pray.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you that today that we could just enjoy this absolutely beautiful summer day and realize that even with all the challenges that are going on in our world, that we still have so much to be thankful for, and we have certainly more blessing than not. And so, Father, we just thank you for life and the richness and fullness of life. We ask that you would be with our mayor and the supervisors here today as they consider the issues that come before them, proactive wisdom and discernment to make good decisions on behalf of all of us. We call Carson City our home. Pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Ken. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's take up the item number six, approval of minutes of July 2nd. Everybody had a chance to read those?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Got to get to that. Public comment. Yep. Anybody on the phone?
There is no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
How'd I know that? Okay. Now we'll go to, now we'll go to item six, approval of minutes, July 2nd, 2020. Everybody had a chance to look at them?
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for July 2nd, 2020, with three previously submitted clerical corrections.
Very good. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Possible, those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion passes, okay. Does that come up automatically?
It didn't come up. And she can't record it either?
There it is. Good. Okay. Thank you. All right. I take up item seven, possible adoption of the agenda. Any changes, City Manager?
No changes.
Any changes the board want? Anybody? I don't see any, so without objection, we will take the agenda as published. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Anybody? I don't see any, so we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay. Let's see, let's now go on to the regular agenda. Pull the item number 12. This is a possible, I'll do it in a second. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of one member of the Library Board of Trustees to fill a four-year term that will expire June 2024. Brad, did you have something on this one?
I do have a disclosure on this item. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm of NAIA Alliance Carson City. In that capacity, I have in the past represented Mr. Carpell, who is an applicant for the Library Board position. However, I do not currently represent him, although there is a possibility I may again in the future. But based on this mere possibility alone, I do not have a substantial and continuing business relationship with Mr. Carpell. I make this disclosure in the interest of full transparency, but because I do not have a disqualifying conflict, I will be voting on this matter.
Any other disclosures? If not, let's take up the substance of 12A. What, who do we have here today? Who's first?
Did you want to do Beth first? William Harris and Jamie Wolfrey couldn't make it today, so they've withdrawn their applications.
So who do we have then?
We'll have Beth Lucas and Richard Carpell and Elizabeth Markle.
All right.
I believe this is Beth.
Yes. Either one of them.
Good morning, Beth. How are you?
Good morning. I'm good, thank you.
So we're going to do the appointments of the Library Board, and the way we do these, have you been through one of these before?
Yes.
You have, so you know, so I'll just shut up here. All right. Tell us why you want to be on the Library Board. Tell us a little bit about yourself, we kind of know, but tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Board.
Um, well, this time I'd really like to continue to be on the Board. I was able to take the position, am I allowed to take this off while I'm talking?
Go ahead. That's fine.
Um, for a vacated position last November, and so I've been serving in that role for about a half a year, and I feel like I'm really just now starting to get my bearings and be able to be a contributing member of the Board. I've completed the training. We've been through some crazy things that, of course, I don't think I saw coming in November when I was appointed with the library closures and the safety measures, but I'm really enjoying it. I really like being involved. I look forward to the Board meetings every month. I love our library. It's probably my favorite public service and has been my whole life. I'm an avid reader and...
Good for you. Good for you. Good reader.
So I'm here, I guess, because I would really like the opportunity to do a four-year term and continue on with what I've started.
Very good. Okay. Anybody have any questions, Beth?
Questions?
So, good morning.
Hello.
So during this period of COVID, what are some of your ideas to provide library services to the public?
Um, I know, well, I know that we have had to, and I really agree with the fact that they've had to step up their digital presence. We've got children that are home, that are bored, parents that are short on ways to entertain them, parents that are bored, that are trapped at home, non-parents that are bored, they're trapped at home. And so I think that having that access to the online books and databases and all of our other digital resources has been fabulous, and I know that our user rates have gone up dramatically, as one would expect and hope. They've also done a great job, and I've been super pleased to see that they've been continuing a lot of the outreach programs online. They've been doing online craft, where you can pick up the kit and do the craft online with the group. They've continued a lot of the other, I guess, clubs and user groups that they've had, and I know that the library staff has been working even harder to do it in that format than they were beforehand. So I follow them on Facebook and pop into a lot of the activities that they're doing, and I think they're doing a great job. I, I guess, support the path that's been taken, and I am happy to see it, and I think that we should continue on that even after things change, which could be a ways out in the future.
Very good. Anybody else? John, Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you. As an avid reader, this probably is a softball for you, but name one fiction and one nonfiction book you've read in the last six months to a year.
Six months to a year. Okay, so...
Only the First Amendment would ask you that question, but that's all right. He can't remember what he read last week, so go ahead.
I know. I do tend to read them and dump them to make room. I really enjoyed Michelle Obama's book. I read that recently, and that was pretty eye-opening, and I think I read it before, I did read it a ways before the recent Black Lives Matter things that have been going on, and so I don't think I saw that that would kind of be relevant to what was coming, but that book was very eye-opening. As for fiction, I tend to rip through them, and lately I've been going for lighthearted because we need a little bit of that. So I really do enjoy, I continue to read as they come out, the Janet Evanovich, Stephanie Plum series, and I don't know which one of the twenties that we're on now, but I do tend to snap them up when I see them on the new release stands, because sometimes you just need to not think about the serious things.
Very good. Go, Brad. Go, Stacy.
Back to the serious things. Can you give us your ideas on where the library can expand their collaboration with the school district during the COVID pandemic?
Oh, yeah, this is going to be important. I know that they have a really successful partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and I know that they are involved with the schools already. I'm hesitant to, I even have an opinion on this one quite yet, because I'm still so unsure. I've been following the school board meetings and sitting in on those, and I think we don't even know how the school year is going to play out. I know the kids are headed back to school in a hybrid format, and parents have had to make a decision about that. So I just don't think that we know if they're even going to be in class through the whole year. I don't know if things are going to go well, and we're going to get to transition back to full in-person, in which case they have their school libraries, they have more services available already there. I don't know if they're going to shut down again and be back at home. If we do face further shutdowns, I think that the curbside delivery that the library was offering will maybe need to step up, because we need to have materials in our homes to keep our children entertained, even if they're home three days a week, as is the current situation. I think that having that online access is good, but I do think it is important, too, to actually have the paper materials. These kids are going to be on their Chromebooks a lot, and I think that we need to vary the format of the media that they're taking in. So I hope that the library can remain open and that our city can remain open, and that they can make visits in and pick their own reading material and avail themselves of the online programs, but I think we need to be prepared to get the materials out to them in other formats, too, if we can't maintain that.
I think it is interesting. I think that we all thought we knew the direction the schools were headed in for this coming year, and then the legislative action yesterday may have turned that all upside down, because schools were excluded from liability for any COVID outbreaks, and I think, from what I've heard, that the legislature admitted that it was an attempt to keep the schools closed. So it'll be interesting. I think we'll know more today to see if, I don't think that the governor was too pleased with that, but we'll see today, I think, if there's a reversal or a step back on that, but as it sits right now, who knows where we're at with the schools.
I think it's going to be kind of day by day and week by week.
I don't think we're the Lone Ranger either. A lot of people think, a lot of people don't know. Okay.
Beth, you know, one of the jobs of the Board of Trustees is to secure adequate funding, so I'd like to know, beyond city funding, what other source of revenue would you explore? And what chance of success do you think the Library Board would have in pursuing those alternative sources of funding?
This is such, this interview is so much harder than last time, because everything is so unstable and so unknown. With funding cuts all over the place, I think a lot of the previous avenues may be evaporating, and our federal government, our state government, our local governments are all having to make really hard budgeting decisions. So there's always the avenue of going for grants. I don't know, those may be evaporating, too. We had written some letters to our congressman a while back as the Board of Trustees, asking them to support funding at the federal level, because it was once again in danger, as my understanding it is on a regular basis, and it usually gets like a last-minute reprieve. But I, budget cuts everywhere. I think that that's definitely a question the Board's going to have to address, and we're going to have to look at difficult, difficult decisions. I don't think I have an answer for you right now, but I think it's something that we all are going to have to expend a lot of energy looking into.
Do you want to add anything, Beth? About your experiences or anything like that, or any other books you've read, encyclopedias?
I read a lot of tax guidance. It's riveting.
Bet you're having fun these days.
Yeah. It's a learning process. No, I just wanted to thank the Board for the opportunity last November to fill that vacated position, and I've really enjoyed it, and I would love to be able to continue on and do a four-year term, because I think that there's a lot that I can contribute and that a lot that I can learn, and we're facing some tough times, and I think we need, I think as a Board together, that we're starting to come together, because we had another newer member or two, and I think we're just starting to kind of find our footing, and it would be great if we could continue to work together.
Very good. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
I think you go back outside there, but I was going to say you might be able to sit here, but I think probably better go outside. That doesn't sound too good. Go outside.
Go to the corner.
You can get out. Go outside.
I'm going to assume this is Richard Carpell.
Mr. Harris?
Richard Carpell.
Carpell, okay.
If you're comfortable.
Wait a bit here.
William Harris and Jamie Wolfrey.
Okay.
So we walk.
Good morning.
Okay.
Let me get your application up here a minute. You ready?
Uh-huh.
So we usually ask questions somewhat similar to each of the applicants to find out. We have one person who just left here, is applying for reappointment, so we have one position to fill. We have some very tremendous, we have got some tremendous applicants for this position. I mean, I think this is one of the ones where you can look at the backgrounds of all of you folks, and they're just tremendous. So why don't you give us an idea of why you want to serve on the Board of Trustees of the library? And couple that with, where do you think libraries are going in the future?
Well, first of all, I love libraries. I've always loved them. There we go. I've always loved libraries, and so they've been a big deal in my life. I'd like to get involved. I am fairly new to Carson City, Brad, and would like to get more involved in community affairs. And I really, to be honest with you, I hadn't really been thinking about it, and I was reading the Nevada Appeal and saw a little notice for this and thought, this would be really cool. I think I'd, and I think I would be able to bring something to the position, just because of my love and interest in libraries. So I think, you know, obviously, I say obviously, obviously libraries are moving, in terms of the future, they're moving more towards different types of technology, and I know that because I'm a big consumer of a lot of those kinds of programs, or I should say, well, I moved here from Northern Virginia, and I visited lots of libraries all over Northern Virginia, was members of both the Fairfax County, and then there's one in Falls Church that I used to go to a lot. And I just, I tend to use things like, this isn't high-tech, but DVD rentals was in the Falls Church Library, and I saw how big of a deal they had, actually a good DVD section, and how big of a deal it was in creating a community in that library. And I think, and there's also streaming, I mean, there's a service I use called Freegal and a couple others. So it's tech. Having said that, you know, books are still key, obviously, and I think the other, the larger part is just making it a community center. I think that's a big part of, I think what a library should be, is a place that people in the community feel welcome and feel like it's a great place to come and bring their kids and to get use out of it.
Very good. Well, we're big on the First Amendment around here, we're big on community, so we'll go on to the next person. Who wants to go? John or Stacy? Want to go, Lori?
Same order?
Same order.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you so much for applying. So during COVID, what are some of your ideas to provide library services to the public?
In other words, how to provide them during COVID? Well, I mean, the two things, number one, I think still, technology is useful in terms of, people can't actually always go to the library. That's number one. I think the other thing is just, we've learned a lot about transmission, and one of the things we've learned is that, for the most part, you can be outside and be fairly safe. And so I think the other thing that libraries, and I even go beyond libraries and other institutions, should think more about, especially in Carson City, where it doesn't rain very often and the weather is pretty predictable, there's a lot of things that you can do outside that you can't do inside. So I mean, you know, I haven't, this isn't a topic I've given a lot of thought to, I will admit that, but those are two of the things that I think I would be thinking about. Okay?
Good morning, Richard.
Hi, Brad.
My question for you today is, give us your thoughts on how the library can expand their collaboration with the school district during the COVID pandemic?
Well, that's going to be a tough one for me, because I'm coming in without, you know, knowing what the relationship is now. You know, I think what I will, what I would say is, I guess I would be thinking about ways that the library can be useful to students and teachers during this period, in terms I'll leave it at that.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here's a softball for you. Name one fiction and one nonfiction book that you've read in the last six months to a year.
Okay, so I, nonfiction, I'm reading now one called Dignity by an author named Chris Arnade. He goes into lower-income areas and focuses on how people are living their lives. Fiction, I tend to be more of a nonfiction guy. I'm going to be honest with you, when it comes to fiction, I think more, I do, it's weird, because I do watch a lot of movies, fiction, and then books is nonfiction. So let me think of the last fiction, Remains of the Day, Kazua, can't pronounce his last name, but a phenomenal book that I would highly recommend.
As an old newspaper man, you could have said the news, and you probably would have been accurate.
Okay. Well, I do read, I tend to be a news hound, that's true.
All right, Richard, one of the duties of the Board of Trustees is to secure funding to provide library services. Beyond city funding, what other sources of revenue would you explore, and what success do you think you'd have in exploring or obtaining that funding?
I think private, obviously, is a people, whether through corporations or wealthy individuals would be one area. I would love to help. Again, I'm, I can't promise you anything at this point, but I think I'm certainly convincing, and if I get involved in something that I care about, I am good at trying to raise money. You initially said local government, and I didn't hear you say state, or...
Well, I didn't say state. I suppose you... I didn't say state, but the library's not state-funded, it's funded by our government, Carson City.
Okay. Okay, so the, and Carson, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Anything you want to add? Tell us what you think about Carson City, or anything you want to add to your qualifications? You've got some great qualifications.
Well, I mean, I think that's clear. I'm not, I'm not, if you're going to, the only thing I would add is, I'm not the person you're going to come to if you, that you're going to choose, if you want somebody who knows a lot about current library activities or how things work in Carson City. Again, I got here, I moved here last February, sold my house, and I got my wife here in January, so we, and then COVID hit, so we haven't, so I've still got a lot to learn. I think, you know, the reason you would want to choose me is because I'm someone who has always been an ideas person and someone who has given a lot of thought to libraries and what they can be in a more general framework. So I, because the other board is, I've obviously worked with a lot of Board of Directors, normally in Todd's position as Executive Director, but I've also been on board, so I kind of, I think I could be helpful in that respect, and just in terms of understanding, you know, how a board can be helpful to an executive and to an institution.
Well, Richard, we want to thank you for, first, making Carson City your home.
Okay.
And two, I know you haven't been here that long, but you step out and want to do things to help your community. That's really good. We like to see that happen here. So, you know, length of time in the community is sometimes important, but I don't, I don't see that happening here. So on behalf of all of us, thanks for applying.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Say again, who do we have now?
Elizabeth Markle.
Good morning, Elizabeth. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Let me get the application up here a minute. Elizabeth, we try and ask the same questions, give everybody the same shot at answering the same questions.
Sounds fair.
They're not, sometimes they're a little bit difficult, but they're not bad questions. Why don't you tell us, we've got your application, but why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself to get started, and when you finish that, tell us why you want to be on the Library Board, and where do you think libraries are going in the future?
Okay, that's all one question, huh?
Well, start with this one. Start by who you are, talk about yourself a little bit, brag, go ahead.
Okay, okay. I, I'll kind of start from, I've always loved working in libraries or working with libraries. I was a library assistant in high school, never really thought about being a librarian, but once I got married and had kids, it was like, well, what am I going to do with my life? I was living in the Chicago suburbs at the time. I went to the College of DuPage, which is a large community college, and received, got a, worked towards a library technical assistance certificate, because I didn't have a... But in order to get a library degree, I had to finish my undergraduate degree. So I went to a cohort program in the Chicago area, got my bachelor's degree. Then I went to, which is now, it's River Forest, it's in River Forest, Rosary College, which is now Dominican University in the Chicago suburbs, worked on my master's degree in library science. I then moved to, I had the opportunity to move to Atlanta, Georgia to work at, with DeVry University and start a whole new library. So I built the library in, we lived outside of Atlanta. And during that time, when I was in Atlanta, I had the opportunity to participate in a PhD program with Colorado State University. And it was, it was a cohort program. It was like, oh, you know, I could do this. So I went ahead and did that, finished my PhD in 2006. And then I was in Atlanta. I don't know if any of you have been to Atlanta, but the traffic is horrible. It's horrible. I, I was 17 miles away from my job and it took me 45 minutes to an hour and a half to get there. And I said, you know, I'd rather be someplace where I don't have to spend that much time in the car. So I started looking around and I saw an advertisement for Sierra Nevada College. They were looking for a library director. And our son had just moved out to, he, he works for a company in the foothills. And I said, you know, I'd really, I think I could get that job. And so I applied for the job. I got the job at Sierra Nevada College. We moved out here in 2007. I was at Sierra Nevada College for 10 years. I decided to retire. And then I was getting a little tired of the snow. There's a lot of snow up there at times.
Not as bad as driving a long time. You're in a car.
Right, right. But we lived up in Incline. We rented a place up there. And so I was able to walk to work. And, you know, that was a whole lot different than, you know, commuting for an hour and a half. So after I retired, we decided to move to Carson. We moved to Carson three years ago. This is a great community. We have, we've really gotten into the social life of the community. We have, we have many more friends here than we ever did in Incline. We participate, my husband volunteers at the, at the museum and works as a pressman on the, in the mint area. He loves it. We participate with Muscle Power as hiking leaders. We just have a really good time here. You know, this is just a great community. So, and, and so my library work has been a lot of academic library work, but now I work at the Nevada State Library as collection development librarian. So that's, you know, it's different. I don't get to work with as many people. I don't, you know, there aren't, I don't have the students to work with. But I do get to interface with the community who are either researching for maybe a book that they're writing. I know we've had Peter Myers in the library several times, doing research for some of his books. I've gotten to know the Nevada Collection in the State Library. And I, I get to select books that will meet the needs of the, of the constituency that the State Library is supposed to serve, which is primarily the state employees and then researchers and people who are, who are interested in the culture and heritage of the state. So my library experience has, you know, been different. I've never been a children's librarian. I have not, I worked briefly at a public library and quite, library quite a while ago, but haven't worked at a public library. But I've already, always been a library user. So why did I sign up for this opportunity? Well, I believe very strongly in libraries. I, I believe very strongly in the importance of, of literacy for the entire community. Libraries, to me, are intricately connected with education. And I have seen libraries in different areas of the country. Libraries are sometimes marginalized in terms of funding and support. And I just feel that as a library trustee, you have an opportunity to be an advocate for the public library, to, to represent the library in the community, to, to help shape the, the, the strategic outlook of the library. There's, libraries have challenges right now. And I feel like I have a lot of experience. I know people from the library community around, particularly in the Washoe-Carson area. So I just thought this would be a good opportunity to contribute to the community.
Very good. Well, from my standpoint, I think that librarians are some of the most erudite folks in the United States.
Awesome.
So finish off that with kind of your thoughts on where you see libraries going in the future here. Ricks and mortar, digital, distance learning, whatever you want to say. What do you, where do you think, what's the, what's the, the ability of libraries, put it this way, what's the ability of libraries to survive in a digital world?
Well, it is tricky. I have somewhat of a, I like to think of myself as sort of a big picture thinker. I believe that a public library does have a responsibility to meet the needs of the community. And a community like this where there's a lot of children and young people, I, I think that it's so important to be able to sort of establish a library habit with young people. Because if, 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 if young people, as they get older, haven't been to the library, if they haven't participated in library activities, whether it's Storytime or, or Makerspace activities or virtual reality, they're not going to come into the library when they're 25. They may start to come into the library when they have kids, because it's always nice to take your kids someplace where someone else can entertain them for half an hour with a story or something. But the libraries, I think, should be kind of the, one of the central learning spots of a community, where there are different kinds of opportunities to learn and grow. And that, a public library, you know, has a, that's a, that's a big scope of things to do, whether it's, you know, things for infants, school-aged children, teenagers, adults, seniors. You have, you have to meet a lot of different needs. So it's, it's challenging to do all of that. Do they all need books, paper books that they're going to open at home? No, not, not necessarily. I like to believe that there's a hand-eye coordination thing going on when you hold the book in your hand. And that's why I don't really agree with a lot of digital books for little ones. Because I think, you know, part of learning how to read is learning how to make that connection between, it's a physical connection. And you learn how to move your eyes and, you know, you, you've, you have that connection. Because you need, a, a reading habit needs to be established. But as you get older, I know that personally, I have a Kindle. So I read on my Kindle. I have a Kindle app on my phone. So if I'm caught someplace and I don't have anything to do, I can actually read my book on my phone if I need to. And my phone recognizes the spot where I left off on my Kindle. So, you know, it's kind of seamless. I have had an iPad where I can read on an iPad as well. Like if I went to a gym and wanted to put it, you know, at the, on the treadmill or something, I could, I could do that. And I read physical books as well. So, and sometimes I feel like I'm getting a little too much digital, but it's really convenient. And then the library has the Overdrive application, which allows us to download books onto our devices and read them. So I'm still participating in that borrowing culture that, that libraries are so well-known for. I mean, you go to the library, you can borrow something. You don't have to spend your money to do that. Now, over my years, I've seen, you know, a, a big increase in people who are able to afford to just buy a book. And, you know, when you can go on Amazon and just, you know, make a, a single click and buy a book and have it available to you right now, that's pretty, that's pretty easy to do. So more people are buying things that way and, or have it mailed to you, buying things that way and not going to the library as much. And that's why it's so important to establish that library habit early. So that even if you're not borrowing books from the library as a 60-year-old and you're not bringing kids to the library, you still recognize that the library has opportunities to participate and needs support to continue. Because I can't even imagine a community without a library. But the libraries, you know, continue to need to change. I mean, we've seen now, you know, we can't, we haven't been able to go into the library as much. The programs and opportunities haven't been there as much. I know my husband and I had been going to the lectures at the museum. And then, you know, COVID came and they stopped those, but they've started doing those on Zoom now again. So it's, it's a whole new world out there. You know, how much Zooming are we going to have to do? It's sometimes frustrating. It's great to be able to meet with people face-to-face. We are, you know, I think we're, we're kind of losing a little humanity, but we're gaining some insight into how the world needs to work. I don't, I don't think libraries are going to go away, but they do need to continue to pay attention to what's going on in the world. They need to be able to support new ideas and innovation. They need to be innovative in terms of the programs that they offer. There needs to be more digitization. Working in the State Library, we have a lot of microfilm of historic Nevada newspapers. I would love to see all of those digitized and put online. So that if someone is doing research on, you know, they want the territorial enterprise from 1865 or whatever, they don't have to come to the library to, to check it out and do microfilm. They can just get to it online. Or, you know, there's a, there's a copyright thing. So it can't be all current newspapers, but a lot of historical stuff could go online. Digitizing state publications, that's another area that, you know, digitization, people need to be able to access. But they need to be smart enough, the library needs to be a partner in helping people learn the intricacies of the technology so that it becomes seamless to them.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Lori?
Good morning. Good morning. So during this COVID time, what are some of your ideas to provide library services to the public?
Well, I think that the library here in Carson has demonstrated a lot of those opportunities by providing programs that are online for children and adults. And keeping the, the library in the forefront of publics, of the public eye. It's, are there more things that could be done? Well, we, there's always more things. But we're sort of in a time where we don't really know what's going on. We don't know how many people we can have in our meeting room. There's lots of, I, I do, like I said, I'm, I'm big on education. I think libraries can offer lectures on various topics. There, there could be partnerships between the library and the museum perhaps, or the State Library even, where there are programs that relate to all of those. So that you can sort of grow your audience larger because you've got a different, a different audience, a new audience. You know, just being visible in the community, participating in citywide events, whether it's, you know, having display tables at Taste of Carson or even the Wine Walk. Don't always communicate or connect the Wine Walk with the library. But, you know, you could, you could, if you thought about it. So that's kind of.
Very good.
Well, Elizabeth, I think you've already covered everything that I was going to ask you. So I'm going to go ahead and pass.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Thank you. Would you please name one fiction and one nonfiction book that you've read in the last six months to a year?
Oh, my gosh. Well, I have read, it's kind of like, what should I say? I read Nickel Boys by Colson Whitehead. That was a recent National Book Award or Pulitzer Prize-winning book. I read a lot of sort of, you know, books for recreation. I read some murder mysteries and that kind of stuff, which don't stay with me a whole long time. But one author I have enjoyed in the past is C.J. Box, who writes mysteries that take place up in Wyoming. J.A. Jantz, who writes about a sheriff in Arizona or a detective in Seattle. Nonfiction, okay, nonfiction. Well, you know, nonfiction changes. I'm not sure people read nonfiction like a whole book all the way through. My husband takes like six months and reads one book and he's totally into it. I sort of page through some of these. I have, I'm trying to think some of the names. I do have right now on my Kindle, I have the book White Fragility, which is pretty in the news right now. So that's, that's one book I've, I've started to read. You know, I buy so many books. I don't remember. Does that, is that enough?
Sure.
Okay.
Stacy?
Elizabeth, one of the duties of the Board of Trustees is to secure adequate funding for library services. So beyond city funding, what other sources of revenue would you explore? And what success do you think the Board of Trustees would have at obtaining that funding?
Well, there are grant opportunities. One of the things that I have done in my past and, and currently is I have, through the state of Nevada, I've applied for LSTA grants, the Library Services and Technology Act. And I have received those grants. I know that I'm, I'm not exactly positive how, I, I don't know that the Board of Trustees can apply for, but I know the public library can apply for those grants and has been the beneficiary of many of those LSTA grants. So the grants aspect is very important. Also, you know, there are opportunities for corporate donations. I'm pretty sure that at Western Nevada College Library, they have a whole section that the funding was donated by the Rotary. So there are, you know, community organizations and corporations that would be possible for the library to cooperate with and collaborate with on projects.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't know how this is going to come out, but C.J. Box is one of my favorites.
Oh, right.
I've read every one of them.
I love C.J. Box.
You know, and I wait for the new ones to come out because I want to, there, there are always these books, you know, where it's. And I wait for the new ones to come out because I want to, there, there are always these books, you know, where it's Game Warden or, you know, out there, you know, kind of thinking, the Game Warden, whether it's he or she, they get in the weirdest situations and there's always a twist at the end and I love them.
Yes, yes.
So is there anything you want to add, other than me telling you that you and I read the same thing?
No, I'm just glad that, you know, you're reading and I'm hoping that everyone here, you know, frequents the library occasionally. I know I don't go into the library as much since I do that online borrowing. But, you know, libraries are important to communities.
Very good. Well, thank you for applying and thank you for your dedication to your new community down here in Carson City. Help make us great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. This is going to be tough, you guys. This is really tough. Thank you, Todd. All right. So JB's not here, is that right? She is?
She's not. So that was it, just the three.
All right. Well, we got three applicants, all, one for reappointment, two who are new here in Carson City, sort of, but who have a tremendous background in library and library services. Board, what's your pleasure? How do you want to proceed? We usually appoint, we usually, if there's somebody's applied for a reappointment, we usually get them, let them do that unless there's a, something that's gone, happened during the interim here. But, so we'll go from there. What, what do you think?
I can start, Mayor. And you know, I did check on Beth Lucas's job performance and her attendance and she got glowing reviews. She's been at every meeting. She does her homework. She's been contributing. I personally know Richard Carpel since he's a client of mine in the past. He's very thoughtful and organized. He would do a great job as trustee. And then with Elizabeth, I mean, wow, I don't even know what to say about Elizabeth. Like a dissertation in leadership. But I think at the end of the day, I think that it would be a disservice to not allow Beth to continue. She's put the work in. I think that she deserves to have a four year term and I would, you know, encourage Richard and Elizabeth to come back when there's another opening because all three of these people would do an excellent job as trustee. But for right now, I'm going to throw my vote in for, for Beth as a reappointment.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Yeah, I tend to agree with Brad too. I mean, I, I've just terribly impressed with, with the qualifications of people we've got here. It really is rather amazing. You look at libraries and you say, you know, who'd want to be on a library board of trustees? You know, these folks have been knee deep in reading, First Amendment issues, libraries, in, in a lot of different capacities. But, you know, I, I do think that in fairness to Beth, she should get the appointment. She's been there for a year now, close to a year. So that's where I would go to. All right. Motion?
I move to appoint Beth Lucas to fill a term expiring in June 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, so it's unanimous.
I think we should make sure we keep those other applications and think hard to encourage them that they don't miss a future application by accident. That we keep those on hand and let them know we have another opening because delightful candidates that would serve us well.
In the past, we had a discussion about when we went through the interview process, process like this and we had extremely qualified candidates that we, we talked about setting up a system where when another appointment or a position came up, that we could go directly to that vetted candidate rather than go through opening it up for more appointees or interviews. Is that still possible, Dan? Because, I mean, we've, we've interviewed three people today. All three are extremely qualified. I'd love to see all three of them on the Board of Trustees. I don't know that we necessarily need to open it up for more people if they want the position and we have a position come up.
Well, I mean, to, to answer your question, that is a possibility. We would just have to implement some sort of a mechanism in place. I'd be happy to work with the city manager's office. In fact, just yesterday, I'm happy to share with the board, we were having discussions about how to maybe tweak and improve the, the current process that we have in place right now. I don't want to get ahead of myself too much because we're still trying to work out, you know, some of the variables. But one of the things that came up during our discussion was perhaps, you know, just, just for example, for the benefit of the public and the benefit of this board, to be able to open up these applications far in advance for, for viewing and vetting. So right now, the way it works is, you know, it can't really be shared with the board collectively unless it's shared simultaneously with the members of the public. So perhaps setting up a website repository where, you know, once an application is submitted, it's open to the public and it's also open to the board as well. So you don't have to wait for the publication of the agenda with the, you know, attached supporting material. That just gives you some advanced, you know, time and opportunity to review that. As to your second question though, you know, which is, you know, can we, can this board go back and just appoint instead of opening it up? I don't see anything in law or in CCMC or local ordinances that would prevent that. As I said, I think it's just a matter of implementing the proper process. I'm happy to work that out with the city manager's office.
I think we ought to pay some thought into that when we go down as we go through these because that's a good, good point that you both talk about there. All right, we ready for the next item? Let's take up item number 13, purchasing and contracts. This is possible action regarding a determination that Reno Tahoe Construction is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Carol, wanted to give us the top line and then who's going to?
Good morning, Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. And yet this is for contract 2030 0024, the Sherman Lane and Viking Way Water Main Replacement Project. The total contract is for $822,442.60. Oh, there's a lot of feedback there. Just, it was put out for bid. We've, we received this one. There were seven bids that were received. And this one was clean cut.
Darren?
And I believe Dan Stuckey's on.
Yeah, Dan Stuckey is on, on remotely. So if we get into any technical questions, we can, he would be best to answer it. It's pretty straightforward. His project's been on our list for a number of years now. Just in terms of its, its old line, we're out there repairing leaks pretty commonly. And we're anxious to get this behind us, so.
Hi, good morning, Mayor and Board. I am on the line. This is Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director. So yeah, Darren, Darren said it all. The contractor Reno Tahoe Construction, if you'll remember, they paid a low bidder on the Riverview Lift Station project that was in front of the board a couple meetings ago. So we are familiar with their work and are working with them on that project and, and, you know, the bid, the bids came in, they were competitively priced. So we feel good about this project. It's definitely one. I've had a number of main breaks out on that area. So our, our water operations team is very excited about this project and hopefully will reduce staff maintenance in the future. So good project for the city.
Questions of either, any of the presenters? Anybody? I don't see any then. Looks like a motion's in order.
Okay.
I got it. I move to award contract number 20300024 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay. Let's take up the next item. This is 13 Bravo. This is Carson City Landfill Tri-County Equipment and Repair. To buy a new or buy, rebuild the Eljon 500 Compactor. Is this budgeted? Carol?
Yes, this is budgeted with the landfill equipment replacement program. I'm sure this is just the contract. This is actually to, for a rebuild on a, on a compactor out of the landfill. And Tri-County Equipment and Repair is a sole source for factory certified, remanufactured Eljon compactors in the U.S., so.
Rich? Questions, Supervisor Bagwell?
So, Rich, will you explain as, as much for us as the public as to, why was the decision to do a rebuild versus a new purchase? What, what was the decision tree? You know, what, why are you comfortable with a rebuild versus a new one?
A couple of, a couple of things went into that decision, one of which obviously is price. $500,000 versus 750 ish for a new one. Other than that, you're going to get about the same amount of useful life out of a reman that you will with a new one. So to me, it just, it makes sense for us.
Yeah, reading through the scope of work.
I'm sorry. My lights are all off because we're all set in different places. By the way, I think on, on that issue, just to break up here, are we going to put plastic up here? Is that what you're telling me, Stephanie?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do have some plexiglass barriers that were in the process of constructing. A portion of them has been constructed, but the rest of the plexiglass has not come in yet. So at this time, they're, they're not available.
All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I just was reading through the scope of work and it looks like it's a frame off restoration for the rebuild. So everything is new except for the frame, which is not, you know, a breakable part. So it seems like you're basically getting the same project or the, the same product, whether you buy new or whether you buy the rebuild, so.
Yeah, pretty much. They'll, they'll end up refinishing the frame and I mean, that's, like you said, it's something that doesn't need to be replaced unless it is broke or tweaked or, you know.
Stacy?
It, it, it's like equipment, right? I mean, it's, it's like to like or a newer model of the same equipment?
Same, same.
Same, same.
Yep.
Other questions of either presenter here? Anybody? Motion's in order.
I move to approve contract 20300122 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. All right.
Thank you all.
All right, let's take up the hospital issue here on the wetlands. That's item 14 Bravo. I think it is. Wait, no, it's Alpha. Go there first.
Mayor, can we open up both items 14A and B?
Sure.
Because I think the discussion's going to go back and forth between the agreements.
I do too, yeah. So unless there's a rejection, Dan, you tell me, but I think we could do both 14A and 14B together. We'll just, is that all right?
That's fine, Mayor. Just, I would ask for separate motions for each of the items.
I can't hear you.
I would just ask for separate motions for each of the items, but certainly we can discuss them together.
All right. Who's going to take this? Why are we doing this?
Hi, will, Mayor. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works for the record. So Stephanie, if you don't mind putting up that first slide, I've got a couple of slides to go. And as you mentioned, I am going to talk kind of about 14A and 14B together. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the basins. Both of 14A and 14B are related to three stormwater detention basins constructed just, I guess, south of the, of the hospital building there. I did want to mention that I have Michelle Joy from Carson Tahoe on the phone, I believe, as well as Tim Russell with Lewis Engineering, who was a consultant for this, their project that they're doing up there right now. And then also Rob Fellows, our Chief Stormwater Engineer from the city. So Stephanie, if you want to just go back to that first slide, that would be great.
It's ready to go.
Thank you. So the history, 2003 hospital was constructed. As part of that, that project, they constructed these three stormwater detention basins. And Eagle Valley Creek, or Eagle Creek, it's been referred to as well, runs just south of the hospital property. And because of the interaction with that project and the creek, the project back in 2003 required a section, a, a section 1 of 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. So Eagle Creek's considered a water of the U.S., which is under the, the review of, of the Corps. So that's why, why they're involved. So with that project, they, they got the 404 permit. They constructed those basins as part of that 404 permit. They were required to do, create some wetlands in those basins. So the three basins there are shown in blue on, on the map that's in front of you. And all three of those, there is wetland areas in the bottom, and those were all a part of that project back in, in 2003. And I do want to mention that, you know, these basins, although they, they are part of that hospital project, they're much more important to the city than just a benefit for the hospital. These are basins that are, they provide water quality benefits. But more importantly, they, they provide flood control benefits for really all of North Carson. So these basins were really kind of master planned out and they were just with the hospitals project. But they provide a very much a regional benefit to our flood control system. So I did want to point that out. So 2003 hospitals constructed, basins are constructed, wetlands are established during that time. We move and fast forward where we are today, 2020, so 17 years later. Now the hospital is undergoing a, I think most of the boards aware, they're, they're doing a building expansion. They're doing enclosed building crossing across Eagle Creek to connect the hospital and the surgery center there on the south of that exhibit. That connection is shown in yellow on your map there, just so you're aware of that project. And, and Michelle or Tim can talk more about that project if you want, if you would like, but since that project involves some channel improvements to Eagle Valley Creek as well, some erosion control benefits, some expansion of conveyance capacity to those channels. So that project has some nice stormwater features associated. It's not just, you know, a, a building crossing project. So during the progression of that project, which, you know, started probably over a year ago, the, 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 there was interaction with the Army Corps. And during that time, they, the Corps basically found out that some of the conditions of the original permit established back in 2003 were not in compliance. And what these were is basically as part of that original permit, there was some growth monitoring of the, the wetlands area and some reporting that needed to be done back to the Army Corps of Engineers. The hospital is the permitty, so it was their responsibility to do that. That didn't happen. So kind of as part of this project, the Corps kind of grouped the noncompliant permit with this project and kind of considered them together. And one of the solutions that the Corps wanted to do as part of this was to place a deed restriction to further protect those wetland areas on two of the three basins that you see in this figure. So that's, that's kind of how the city gets involved now. So the, the Corps wants to place these deed restrictions, further protect. Those are city, those basins are on city owned property. So we started working with the hospital probably about six months ago to kind of develop a solution and how we could figure out something that would work for the city as well as for the hospital project. So now I'm going to get into kind of that 14A, which is the agreement. So Stephanie, if you don't mind going to the next slide. I want to talk kind of first about, because I think the big question is, is, you know, how do these deed restrictions impact the city? And, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, we don't want to do anything with these basins in the future. These are flood control benefit. It would be a big deal if we ever got rid of these benefit because it's you know, multiple properties way downstream in North Carson City. So something is our stormwater system. I want to talk about the, the deed restrictions, although there's three wetland areas in all of these basins, the deed restrictions only impact basin one wetland areas and basin three wetland areas. And that's important to note because I'll explain kind of the hydraulics of the system and why we think that's important. Primarily when flows come down Eagle Creek, they flow into basin two, which is, will not have a deed restriction placed on it. We will be able to do everything that we were able to do before. And the flows come into that basin and if there, you know, it's a significant event, some of the sediment that might be a part of that flow, a lot of that larger sediment drops out in that basin and you know, it flows on to basin three. Basin one is only used in very big events, flow over tops into basin one. So basin two is really So, basin two is really where the focus of our maintenance efforts has been in the past and where we see it going in the future. So, that is unimpacted by this deed restriction. And I'm using the word deed restriction, but it's also referred to as a declaration of restrictions in that fourteen B item, so I'm kind of using them interchangeably. So, hopefully that's, I apologize for that. I'm just, I'm used to the deed restriction term. And how will this impact future maintenance effort in the city? It really doesn't change anything of what we can or cannot do. It just adds a layer of coordination and communication between the city and the Army Corps of Engineers, which that is one of a burden, because there is that extra layer, but these are not. I know Rob Fellows has a relationship with the Corps. We've worked with them a number of times. So, what this would be is all of our future planned maintenance activities, we would just have to coordinate with the Corps on, on some of those. If they qualify under those declarations of restrictions, we'd coordinate with them on those. So, that's really, that doesn't, or I guess the, the restriction that's placed on the city, how it would change for us is that added layer of coordination. There's not added maintenance activities associated with it. And those are always wetlands before, they will be wetlands in the future. So, because this, this added, you know, layer of communication is being placed on the city, we wanted to, you know, come up with something that the city could get in return, and what we focused on was more reducing maintenance responsibilities. And so, one thing we, we talked to the hospital about is, you know, we have projects that we think are really important in the upstream watershed, some of these erosion control projects that will help really keep sediment and, and, you know, help with erosion control in that watershed. And so, I'm gonna kind of jump back to the agreement. Sorry, I'm kind of going back and forth here. So, when we are working on that agreement, we wanted to receive money to be able to do these improvements, have the hospital pay the city. So, as, you know, the hospital, the declaration of restrictions is getting placed on these basins in two thousand and three, but we are getting an amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to do these upstream erosion improvements. And I wanna talk, the twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty was determined based off of the city-provided engineer's estimate for these erosion control improvements. And what they are, are basically, there's some, there's some part of the creek that's, you know, essentially has, it's essentially dirt, you know, it's eroding. We were gonna rockline that and then add some rock check dams that'll help slow water down and help some of that sediment drop out in certain areas. So, we think they're, they're big benefits. So, that's where that twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty number came up with, or where we came up with that. If approved, we, we have these plant improvements, we would get them in design, and we would intend to, and construct within the next year. And so, that's kind of the, the summary of the agreement. I did have a change to the agreement, that as we kind of went through our review process, we wanted to make a slight change. Stephanie, could you please go to the next slide? This is on, it'll be page, let's see, page four of your packet for item fourteen A. It's page two of the agreement.
Page, page one eighty-nine in our supervisor package.
Oh. Thank, thank you, Supervisor Monkowski. So, it's item one G, and the reason for this change is, the way it was read before is, you know, any future work that might be a result of the permit or of the wetland areas that the Corps might require, we didn't wanna be on the hook for those future improvements or costs associated with those improvements. The city, we didn't want this to be on the hook. And even though the hospital is the permitty, and that, really, that permits between the hospital and the Corps, we felt like we wanted to make this change mostly for clarification and then just make it really clean and clear. So, the revision that we're proposing to that agreement, as you see in front of you, we have sent that over to Michelle Joy at the hospital. They have agreed to this. So, I did point out that change. That's essentially what fourteen A and fourteen B are. I'm happy to answer, answer any questions. There was, on fourteen B, there was late material submitted. The city went back and forth, probably three or four iterations with the Army Corps of Engineers. And so, when we loaded up this item, the Corps was still finishing their final review. We feel good about what they sent back, and if you, hopefully you were able to look at the redlined version, I think it makes it really clear what changed in that declaration of restrictions, but we feel like it's, it's, the, the changes are very minor, and we are, are very, we're, we're happy with it, and anyway. So, hopefully you were able to see that. So, that's the summary of fourteen A and fourteen B, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And for the record, just to clarify the record, the late material on fourteen B that we received in person here in the Sierra Room is mislabeled. It's labeled as late material for item fourteen D, as in dog, rather than fourteen B as in boy. However, the material that is uploaded to the website for the public review is labeled correctly as fourteen B as in boy. So, we will, with that clarification, we will continue with this item. And Stacy, you had questions?
Yeah, thanks. Dan, I just, I wanna make sure to get on the record that, that compliance with the permit isn't changing responsibility. It isn't moving from the hospital to the city. It's staying with the hospital. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yes, the hospital is the name on the permit. They are responsible for any monitoring or any progress reports or anything like that that needs to happen with the Corps. They are the name on the permit, and they would be responsible for that. There's no additional items that are being passed on to the city.
So, as a result of that, does it complicate things then if, in the future, let's say we have a flood event where you need to do some emergency mitigation in basin one or three? Does that make it more complicated for us to do that work? Will it delay any potential emergency work or emergency recovery efforts? Because we're not the permit holder?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, Rob might be able to answer this better than me. I mean, the, the original permit language does allow for some kind of, you know, emergency type, like, response to cleanup. The city, as far as the responsibilities for that, I mean, the city's always been, as far as the stormwater-type flood control events and cleanup of that, we've always been responsible for that. There may be an added layer of coordination with the Corps, but I don't believe in an emergency event. I mean, if we need to keep, you know, our, our stormwater system operational and functional, we would just get, and I believe there is some provisions in the original permit that allows us to do that. That's still active today. Rob, I don't know if you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so then in your opinion or yours and Rob's opinion, it, we're not materially affected by that? I mean, I'm thinking of those instances where we're in the recovery phase of, of a flood, and, you know, it isn't unprecedented that we could have a flood event followed within a month by another flood event, and if we don't do some emergency remediation, you know, we could be impacting property. So, I, I just, I wanted to hear from you that you're comfortable with our ability to do that.
I am comfortable, and, you know, the Corps is very aware of that. Although it's a wetlands area, kind of to them in a lot of ways, they're very aware that it's a critical, these are critical stormwater facilities, detention basins for us. And so, I am comfortable with what our, what we'd be able to do in, in the case that you just brought up.
Okay, great. Two, two more questions, sorry. The first is the upstream work that you're doing with the twenty-four thousand odd dollars. Is that, how far upstream is that work being done? And may other property owners be impacted by that work?
Yeah, and I'll, I can let Rob kind of talk more about the specifics, but we have, well, Rob, do you wanna handle that and talk about the project?
Yes, this is Rob Fellows, Chief Stormwater Engineer for Carson City. The, the upstream property owner is the, the children's home there, and the, the area that we're looking at is, is, would be on their property.
Okay. Have we had a discussion with them about that?
I've been in contact with them over the years about this issue, so we, we have talked about it, and we'll continue to, to work through, 'cause they have their own set of issues, but they're amenable and would, would wanna work with us on that area as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not, you know, adversely impacting one property owner to the benefit of another. So, as long as you feel comfortable that you've had adequate discussions with them, I appreciate that. And then one final question. I just wanna confirm that they're not building on land that the city owns? They're just, this is essentially just movement of water that we're talking about, right?
Yes, they're, they're not building on land that the, the city owns.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, just a slight follow-up on a question that Stacy had. While you've indicated you're in communications with the children's home, is it gonna require a right-of-way or anything that they're gonna have to grant? And is there gonna be any exchange of money for that? I, I just often know when we do things like this, there's consideration given. Is that part of the twenty-four thousand six fifty figure? Or do we need to deal with, if there's consideration to be given to the children's home, that that's the responsibility of the hospital? Since the hospital doesn't own it.
We, we need to work out the details. I, I don't believe that they would want money for us to get permission to help stabilize the channel or, or help them with some of their issues related to the creek. But we're, we're gonna flush that out and, and work towards a common solution.
Just as so, is there anything wrong with just in our motion indicating if there's further expense of a, of, from the children, property owner's side, that Carson Tahoe would bear that negotiation and cost? It would not be the city?
Um, yeah, so, you know, I, we could, we could add that to the language. I'm not sure how, let me pull it up, not sure how that would look.
I can, I can have the DA's office conform the, the change. I, I just think that we need to be very careful that the twenty-four thousand six fifty covers our costs, but if there is negotiations, because we are not the property owner where you're gonna be doing the work. So, I just wanna say that that negotiations, certainly we would help, I would assume, put the whole deal together, but I don't want any responsibility.
I guess too, that we look at the change in G to see if that, what you're asking would be covered in the new language.
Yeah, and I guess, this Stacy again, I mean, I, I think that's exactly was my reason for bringing this up, is the upstream changes, if, if, if we've, you know, where did we come up with that number if we don't know that the children's home is not gonna ask us to buy an easement? I, I guess that's the concern that I have and, and was asking about in my question.
And I'm reading that amendment to say future project, not the project of discussion.
Darren Schultz, for the record, is a really, really good conversation. I think it's, you know, there, yes, there is, there is, there is a chance that, that that property owner is gonna say, no, don't do any work here. But the work that we're planning to do is a direct improvement to their property. So, they're basically getting an improvement for free, because we're, we now have funding to do it. So, for them to tell us to go, we're not interested in this, I mean, you're right, it could, it could happen, but very, very unlikely.
I just wanna protect us dollar-wise, that we're not short ten thousand dollars to perform the project. That's, that's the sole issue for me. I think that it's in the best interest of all the parties to work on getting this done, so I, I don't doubt the other property owner will be workable, but sometimes you get into something and find out when you go to do that there, whatever, they need a sidewall over here to make that work, or it changes their parking lot, or it, whatever. It does something that's an unintended consequence, so I just wanted to protect us there. Is that something I can?
Michelle Joy still on? Is she there? Michelle?
Can you? Carol?
We can. What I, have you been following the discussion between Supervisor Bagwell and our staff?
Yes.
What's your take on?
Yes. We're comfortable, I think, you know, what Darren had just shared, we're in agreement that it's unlikely that the children's home is not gonna want this improvement done to their property. We have talked about this in our discussions, and the hospital is comfortable in being part of the conversation with the children's home and part of that negotiation, and ensuring that whatever needs to get done will take place, and if there's additional dollars that are needed to, to make that work, we will work through that and make sure it gets done.
All right. Any other questions? Supervisor Barrett?
Yes, I, I'm tailing in on this, because I've read that several times, let's put it that way. And I just wanna be sure everybody has read it, 'cause I frankly don't understand it, and I've been reading governmentese all my life. Have all the lawyers signed off on this? Because that's almost backwards to me, but I'm misunderstanding it, I suppose. I'm talking about the language that we're, that we've been talking about right from the start. It, it, it seems to me to be backwards, but I, I'm, perhaps I'm being dyslexic without having the capability.
So, you know, on this one, I, I think that Todd Reese, who's a DDA in my office and is assigned to Public Works and has been intimately involved in these two subjects, you know, I think he's on the line right now. I know that he is watching from home. He sent me an email this morning saying that he would be participating. So, if he is on the line, I would just ask him to chime in. I, I don't wanna, you know, kinda, you know, get ahead of myself in terms of, you know, what, what the discussions may have been, what the thought process might have been with respect to the mandatory language here, because I, I did not have involvement, direct involvement, in the drafting of that language. So, if, if Todd Reese is watching and, and on the line, I would ask for him to hop in.
Todd? Mr. Yu, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm online. Supervisor Barrett, could you clarify your question for me? Are you talking about?
No, I'm, I'm being quite frank. I don't understand what that says. Maybe I'm just, maybe I'm just being dense, but it seems to me, it seems backwards to me. But then, I've read governmentese and, and, and I wanna, I don't wanna knock anybody, call it lawyer, lawyer language, but I'll be frank with you, I, I always had trouble when I covered courts as a newsman, because they were all English words, but I didn't always understand what's being said. Can you explain it to me in layman's language, what that says?
I, I will try, and, and to make sure we're on the same page, you're talking about the edits to one G of the contract with the hospital, is that correct?
Correct. The one that was up on the board before you came back on, with the red and the black type.
Uh, certainly.
Todd, do you want me to explain the genesis of the change?
Certainly, Supervisor Monkowski.
So, the change came from a meeting that we had yesterday with Dan Stecky, Darren, myself, where I had some questions and concerns on both documents, the wetlands agreement and then the declaration of restrictions. And on this particular, the, the language in one G, my question was, the twenty-four thousand plus covers the improvements that we know of right now, but there may be ongoing maintenance items required or improvement items required in the future under the Army Corps of Engineers. And I just wanted to make sure that we had appropriate language in the document that said that the city wouldn't be on the hook for the cost of those ongoing maintenance or improvement items that were directly related to the hospital's project. So this is the language that we came up with to ensure that if there are additional costs in the future for the hospital's portion of the improvements, that that cost is taken on by the hospital.
And Supervisor Barrett, to add on to Supervisor Bonkowski's comments, the way that 1G was worded previously, it could have, it could have potentially foreclosed the city from seeking payment from the hospital for future costs. And what we've added is that the future costs relating to the wetlands in basins one and three are exempted from this clause so that the hospital and the city, if the hospital has a future project, you know, the cost could, could be a part of that project. And the second portion of it states that the city wouldn't, will not seek reimbursement for the work performed with the project, which is the upstream improvements to the creek, or for simply the placement of the restrictions on the property. Now, with Supervisor Bagwell's concerns and comments, I agree that an edit would need to be made to this clause to include, make sure that we included any, that the hospital would also pay for any costs associated with possible easements or other issues that may arise with the children's home.
Thank you. And after hearing from, it sounds like you're both satisfied with the language, and after hearing from Michelle, I'm satisfied. I just wanted to be sure we were clear. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions of anybody on this item? Good discussion. Thanks for going in. Go, clarification.
Just for clarification then, so we are all in agreement that G needs a slight amendment to discuss the third-party easements, because it says, "City shall not seek reimbursement from CTH for work performed." We do want the reimbursement, or do we want, I don't understand why we're even putting the $24,500 in here. Why isn't it just they pay for the project? Maybe that's what I don't understand. For the simplicity of all, the project cost is their expense, future things that we might do on the wetlands is ours. Am I actually clarifying that correctly?
I don't know. No.
The project is their expense.
Supervisor Bagwell, I would, on a portion of that, I would have to defer to Dan Steckey and so that I'd ask the DA.
Right, I'm trying to understand how we.
On the dollar amount, either Dan or Rob. But as far as the future costs relating to wetlands one and three, I think that leaving it as is would be beneficial, because then we could allocate, you know, if the future costs were as a result of the city project, the city could bear the burden, but if future costs were a result of a hospital project, the hospital could bear the burden.
Right, no, I like that. I don't like the next sentence. I don't like the city shall not seek reimbursement from CTH for the work performed for the project. So if it exceeds $24,650 to do the project, the city has to pay for it, under the current condition. But I think I heard the hospital say if there was additional expense because of the third party, they would pay it.
The goal, yeah, to come together, it's, they didn't, they weren't comfortable with a blank check. We had to come up with what it was, what it was going to cost and what we were going to do, so we put that estimate together as to what it would be. And so the, you know, the hospital was aware of what was coming at them. By just saying they would be responsible for everything, we could, we could go have a lot of fun out there and just send the check on to them, improve the stream all the way up the mountain. So I believe that's, that's the nexus of why that happened. But it sounds like they said on the record that if there's additional costs to do this project by acquiring the land or getting an easement, that they're good with it. So I think we're covered.
Do we need language to that? And so we could just in the motion have the attorneys from both parties conform that change?
Yeah, I know. And Supervisor Bagwell, I think it is important, even though we verbalized on the record today during discussions, that that is the party's intent. I think that, you know, we always run the risk of, you know, a few years down the line, if there's ever a dispute, it's difficult to capture any sort of extrinsic evidence outside of the four corners of the contract. So you always want to be very particular about amending the necessary language into the contract if we need to do that. So that would be my recommendation, and it doesn't sound like there is a dispute or misunderstanding between the parties as to what the actual intent is. So I would ask that when this board makes its motion to approve this contract, that you would include into it a direction to the DA's office to make that conforming change, unless you wanted us to try to specify what that language will look like on the record right now. And if that is the case, I would just ask for a brief recess, so maybe Todd and I could confer. But if you do trust the DA's office, I would just ask that you direct us to include that conforming language to capture the party's intent as discussed on the record today.
I'd like to see the language now, if possible.
Let's give a shout out to language. We've tried, what would you say?
If you would like to see the language, I would just ask for a quick recess so that Todd and I could discuss.
Why don't we, I took a little recess earlier. Let's take a recess for 10 minutes.
Yeah, we'll catch up with you, Bob.
All right.[1017.32]
See Nancy here. She may be using the restroom while gabbing around here. Want to go with, I don't know, we'll wait for Nancy to get back. Maybe we ought to put speakers in the... On the record, Dan, you want to read us kind of what you got, or Todd's going to do that? Are you going to do it?
Sure. Thank you for giving us that quick recess, Mayor. So Todd and I were on the phone and we brainstormed proposed mandatory language as discussed on the record to capture the party's intent and to clarify, you know, these possibilities and changes and circumstances. I'll just go ahead and I'll ask Todd to read this proposed language onto the record.
All right, Todd?
Yes, I believe I'm on, back online. The additional language that we have is except for the stated payment, any additional costs necessary for acquisition of easements or other land rights associated with the project, any additional costs reasonably necessary to complete the performance of the project specified in this agreement, and any costs related to future projects concerning the wetlands portions of basins one and three under the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit, S.P.K. 2003-25013, comma, "City shall not seek reimbursement from CTH for work performed for the project or for the placement of the restrictions on city's stormwater detention basins," period.
Read the last part again, please.
Sure. The last part is essentially the same as the previous edits. The last clause says, "City shall not seek reimbursement from CTH for work performed for the project or for the placement of the restrictions on city's stormwater detention basins."
Right, I got you. All right, so no change to that language?
There's no change in that last clause. The changes are in the first clause where the exceptions are, and there's two added exceptions. One, for any additional costs necessary for acquisition of easements or other land rights associated with the project, and a second clause adding any additional costs reasonably necessary to complete the performance of the project specified in this agreement.
All right, before I ask the hospital where they are on the board, are we okay with that language? We okay? Michelle Joy or Tim Russell? Is that language okay with you folks? Not that we're going to negotiate here, but let us know. Brad?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Right, so, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Michelle, this is Brad. I do have a question, Todd. I don't believe that the improvements for the project are stated in the agreement.
The project is defined in the agreement as, let's see, where is it? For future upstream stormwater drainage improvement, or future upstream stormwater drainage improvements upstream from the CTH parcels referenced above, which will be designed and constructed in a manner to reduce sediment transport in the Lakeview watershed which impacts Eagle Valley Creek. And that's defined as the project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Michelle?
So this is Michelle Joy, and the one concern with that language is that it is pretty broad when you talk about the entire Lakeview watershed. And, you know, we are comfortable with the area around the children's home and that portion of Eagle Valley and the work being done there, as that was the section that we had talked about originally. I am concerned of having it open-ended, that it goes, you know, all the way upstream to who knows where that starts.
Yeah.
Could add the parcel. But they agreed to...
Go ahead, Todd.
If it would be amenable to both the board, to Public Works, and to the hospital, we could modify the definition of the project up in the whereas clause to simply state that it's on the parcel owned by the children's home.
You put the parcel numbers in there.
Well, let me ask this question, folks. I'd hate to, you know, we sometimes do this where we draft on the fly here, which sometimes works, but I'm getting a little gun shy, you know? Maybe the hospital's got against lawyer to look at this stuff too, or whoever uses. So, or do you want to just delay this to the next agenda item, work this out? I mean, it doesn't look like it's going to be that big of a lift to work it out, but I think rather than doing it in an open meeting here, or doing it in a meeting period like this, it doesn't lead to a result that we can, well, it's just difficult to do. So unless, or, or is it okay we put this off two weeks?
Sounds good to me, Solomon.
Mayor, I think I would ask Michelle that because it's delaying their construction project, which is costing them money.
Okay, well, then Michelle's going to have to deliver the language then. I didn't mean that that way, Michelle, don't worry.
No, I know.
Just be facetious, but, you know...
So if we, one question would be if we could have approval on the agenda item regarding the deed restrictions, which is the key part that needs to be recorded for us to be able to proceed, and then if we're close on the language regarding this agreement for the wetlands work, and have that agreement brought back at the next meeting.
Does that work with our folks? All right, Stacy, go.
You know, I'm not comfortable separating these. I mean, the deed restriction is what we control, and if we approve that now, we're losing what we control. That's just my two cents worth.
All right. All right, then. What, Michelle, are we going to upset the construction schedule if we could delay two weeks and get this language worked out?
Yeah, we're already, the project was originally scheduled to be done in July, and we are now pushing out into September. So every day that we delay, it's about $5,000 additional cost per day on the project for us.
This is Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director. I'm wondering if Todd, if we can change 1G to when we talk about the land rights and the drainage easement, if we can associate that part with APN, and I can give you the APN for the children's home.
Okay, wait a second. Before we go down that road, before we get too far down that road, let me suggest this so we can move on. Give you till the end of the meeting here this morning to work the language out with Michelle. We'll take this up again, we'll just put it in abeyance until the end, the last minute. Will, you guys come in and tell us when you got the language fixed. If it's before the end of the meeting, we're going to take it up. If it's after the end of the meeting? So we did, okay? So now everybody better get their pens out and their lawyers out between now and 11:30, or whatever that is.
Thank you, Mayor, that's what I was going to suggest as well.
All right, so we'll just hold those, hold 14A and 14B in abeyance. We'll take up now, unless there's an objection, we'll take up 14 Charlie. This is the BLM right-of-way grant amendment. Who's doing this one? Dan?
I will go ahead. Yes, sir, Mayor, I will go ahead and do this one. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, for the record. Stephanie, do you mind putting up that last slide that I sent you?
It's up now, Dan.
Thank you. So, Board, this is basically a right-of-way amendment with BLM for portions of Brunswick Road, Sedge Road. This will allow us, you know, essentially legal access to use and be able to do operations. As you know, Brunswick leads to, Brunswick Road leads to the reservoir, which is a critical, you know, facility for the city. We've got a dam, a spillway, reclaimed line that runs up there. So it's critical that we have proper access. We, the exhibit that you see in front of you, the green line is essentially what we established as right-of-way with BLM, the grant, the original grant back in the 80s. What really came to light during the 2017 storm events that damaged a significant portion of Brunswick Canyon Road, primarily the damage was done in the yellow line or orange line that you see on that exhibit. It came to light that the city did not have a proper easement across BLM land to use that road. So this amendment, we've been working with BLM for some time, and obviously the 2017 storm was some time ago. So as part of, you know, getting out there and doing the repairs and working with the FEMA grant and all of that, we've been working with BLM to get a right-of-way amendment to essentially include the orange line, attach that on to the green line that we already had before. And so it really accomplishes two things. One, it gives us the access that we should have and need for continued operations of Brunswick, but it also allows us to fix that road, which is, really needs to happen. So, again, we've been working on it for a while, and that's why this item is in front of you. There was some questions regarding what is BLM's authority of, you know, the type of roadway repairs and the type of maintenance that we keep that road in in the future. They do have some authority into that, but I do want to make clear that as part of this application, the city was required to submit a roadway plan of development, and with that submittal, we included our construction plans of how we plan to repair the flood damage, the road. So that has all of our standards. BLM has reviewed that and approved that. It also included a section on how we plan to operate and maintain the road in the future, so we described that as well. They're very aware of our plan and they have approved that. Additionally, the road that we've had, that's already had right-of-way in the past, the green line there, you know, we've never had an issue with, you know, them coming back at us and asking us to, you know, repair the road or maintain condition, and we would expect that the road repair that we do now will be, you know, kept as good a condition or better than what we've previously had and established right-of-way before. So that's the summary of this item. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dan, did we get resolution on the rental clause?
Yes, Supervisor Von Kowski, thank you for pointing out how, and I'm not sure what number it is in your packet, I apologize, but...
Number three.
I think it's, okay, number three, there's a little section on rental fees, and it does talk about, you know, these fees don't apply to organizations that are exempt. I did confirm with BLM, we are an exempt agency, and we would not be paying any rental fees in the future. Thank you, Supervisor Von Kowski, for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Other questions? Good, go.
So, just for clarifications, there's no section of a road that currently has motorized activity that will become non-motorized. It's difficult for me looking at that because I know, the orange that you're talking about, is that red on our map? But I'm trying to understand what section of this road, because I know a ton of people park on the end of Sedge there and ride their four-wheelers, and I thought I saw in here, is it a separate road? I just want to make sure we're not changing an impact of something that the public's currently using, because I can't tell where you're adding the new right-of-way that says we can't have motorized.
There will be no change in from going, you know, a section motorized before will become unmotorized with this agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Are we okay on this one? Motion's in order. Go.
I move to approve and authorize the Public Works Director to sign the right-of-way grant amendment.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Is there a nay on that one? Okay. All right.
Five zero.
Five oh.
Five oh, okay, unanimous, thanks. All right. Let's take up stormwater rates, 14 Delta. Anybody for the UFOC here? Okay. Tell us what we're doing, give us, run us through it. Some people, I think, think this is water rates, it's not, it's stormwater rates.
Mayor Supervisors, Darren Schultz, Public Works Director, for the record. Yes, we are here today to just talk about the stormwater rates. This is something that we have talked about off and on over the last few years, and the staff report kind of gives the background as to why we're actually here specifically today. The goal, though, is that we're, we do understand things going on in our economy around us, but we're at the point now where we really need to make something happen. Backing up to the date where we are today, if this continues to move forward through the process, the idea is that these rates would go into effect starting January 1, which is when we had proposed the increases to water and wastewater as well. So we're talking about stormwater here today, but we are aware that it's all the utilities that are being impacted, and as a result, it's, all three would be impacting our rate pairs. Far West has been our consultant on this, we've had numerous meetings with the UFOC. Four, four, I think? Four times we met with the UFOC to get this right and to get it to the point where it is today. We have Mike Bennett, who is the Chair of the UFOC, will be joining us here for any questions related to them. We've also had a couple of public meetings just to reach out and get input, and through that process to get to where we are today, we come up with this plan that we're presenting, and it's taking into account all of those comments and informing a rate plan that addresses as many as we can and try and helps us out into the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brent.
Good morning. Good morning. Grateful to be here, and for the record, my name is Brent Farr, I'm with Far West Engineering. As Darren said, what's going to be presented here represents a significant collaborative effort between the city staff, Far West, and the UFOC. We're grateful for the staff's contributions and the UFOC, very helpful in getting to this point. I want to start with a little bit of background here. Let me just add that. The city has its own well-established stormwater program and stormwater utility, and from my perspective, that makes the city fairly progressive in their efforts in stormwater. A lot of other communities have their stormwater programs sort of tucked into their sewer, and here they have it as a separate utility, which is really a great thing. This slide just sort of highlights some of the elements of their stormwater utility program, and it includes, obviously, floodplain management, also the MS4 permit that they have to manage through NDEP. So basically regulatory permitting and also management and maintenance of their infrastructure. Let's put this stuff in. This slide just shows how the various stormwater program elements are distributed by budget, very difficult to read there, but really, operation and maintenance and capital and debt comprise the majority of the expenses.
Brett, I have a question on this slide.
Yes.
When you look at the pie chart, it shows capital improvements, bond funded of 555,000, but debt service of 752,000. Those must be separate line items? Is that debt service for previously issued debt, not the debt that is proposed to be issued under the capital improvements, the 555,000? Because obviously you can't have more debt than the amount of the capital improvements.
Yeah, I'll answer that. The 555,000 is the actual amount of money we are spending on capital projects from previous, the bond that was sold two years ago.
We did the four high priority projects that we did.
So that's the cash contribution?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have the debt service plus the cash contribution?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is a snapshot of the 10-year CIP for the stormwater program, amounting to about 20, 24 million. The five-year CIP is about 10 million, and I think this is just good to know that staff has a well-laid-out plan for capital improvement and expansion of the system, and so a lot of work to be done there. And then this is a little map that shows where those projects are distributed throughout the system.
Can you flip back one slide?
Yeah. Can you read any of that? I can't.
There's nothing on those, on the basins that we were talking about just a few minutes ago. It's just important, again, that there's nothing we can strike or get a benefit. I think it...
Good point. So the basis for the revenue requirement and the rate increase, right now we have a program that generates 1.8, 1.9 million annually and supports what staff refers to as a, quote, "moderate" program, but also limits the capital improvements that can be made, which are needed. And the bottom line there is that it's not a self-sustaining enterprise fund, and that's a key issue for the city. The proposed rate plan would add about 1.4 million, so just to be clear, you know, we're sitting at about... So just to be clear, you know, we're sitting at about, you know, again, one nine. And the revenue requirement based on the needs identified by, by staff is close to three point two. So we're off by quite a bit. You know, it's about a, I think a sixty-four percent increase from where we stand right now. The proposed rate plan would generate that additional income or revenue needed to support an improved program, a more high-level operating program. Also supports the ten-year CIP and operation and maintenance. And it is, and ultimately would be, a self-sustaining enterprise fund, which is a great accomplishment and goal. Just wanted to put this note in here about the municipal code. And as you may be aware, the existing rate structure is based on zoning classifications assigned to each parcel. So it's very, very much attached to zoning. And that's just for reference. I think what we're recommending here today would be a slight modification on that to more of something related to impervious area on the parcel, rather than just zoning alone.
I don't think I got that one. Say that again, please?
Yeah, so this, this code that was established as part of the, the rate structure that's currently in effect is based on zoning. And where we're going, and I'll show this as we go along, is more based on the impervious area of a parcel, rather than just, you know, what kind of the zoning is associated with it.
Excuse me.
Yes.
That sounds like a greater change than just a little change. Is that correct?
Well, I think, you know, as I, as I go to the next slide here, I think what I'll, let me just do that because I think it'll answer your question. So the existing rates here are shown as, this is, this is how it is. This is how it laid out, the single-family properties, multifamily, public, manufacturing and commercial. And there's, there's various zoning codes that fall under each of these, but these are the broader categories. And so depending on, you know, what type of property you own, you pay these different rates. Back in two thousand seventeen, staff brought forward a plan to increase rates. And what happened there was that, that was partially approved. The Board of Supervisors approved a thirty percent increase, but then requested staff to go back and do some analysis and bring something forward that was more, maybe more equitable or addressed differences between different types of properties. And so that triggered the work that, that Far West has been engaged in in conjunction with the UFOC and staff. And so that's what we'll be presenting today is how we have come up with what we believe is a more equitable structure and addresses some of those differences. This pie chart shows customer distribution. And you can see in the, in the, in the blue, the royal blue there, the vast majority is residential, about ninety percent. And then the next largest section would be commercial. And then you've got a mix of public manufacturing and multifamily. So I think that pie chart shows the story there that the vast majority of customers are residential.
Brett, did you happen to do this same pie chart after changing the structure? So from your proposal or the UFOC's recommendations, how does this pie chart change the percentages?
I looked at that this morning and actually, what I believe this chart shows is the number of customers. And so I don't expect that to change, but I do have a slide that shows the, sort of the pro-rata share of the revenue contributed, which does change as a result of the study. I wanted to highlight, really the basis for our analysis here in terms of determining equity and show a couple of examples of how the existing structure doesn't quite address all of the different circumstances adequately. So let me just show you an example here. So this is a little three-unit multifamily property that sits on a half an acre. And prior analysis has about sixty-seven hundred square foot, square feet of impervious area that contributes to stormwater runoff. It's one method of trying to determine an individual property's contribution to the stormwater runoff. So then, so, and I can come back to this, but go to this, the next one here. This is a mobile home park. Again, also categorized as multifamily, eighty-nine units. It's ten acres with an impervious area of two hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet. And the key thing to remember is this property and this property pay the same monthly bill. And here's just another example, a seven-acre property with two hundred and thirty-two thousand square foot of impervious area, very close to this one, also pays the same amount as this property. So when, when looking at those types of metrics of contribution to stormwater runoff, which isn't the only thing that should be considered, you can see quite an anomaly here between certain types of properties. We looked at similar things with commercial. Here's a little, you know, what's circled or identified by the red square is one little tenant in a, you know, in a business complex in downtown. Mixed use only point oh six acres. And the impervious area really is the rooftop and some, you know, some paved areas. Twenty-seven hundred square feet, very small. And then you have these kind of unusual situations where you have like this one zoned as a residential office, but this individual happens to just live there, doesn't run a business out of that location. It's about eleven thousand square feet of impervious area, but he pays a commercial rate, the same as, as this parcel. But then you have the outliers like this slight industrial property, a twenty-acre parcel with, you know, three-quarters of a million square feet impervious area, also paying the same amount as these other two properties. So, you know, a broad range of properties that have different contribution levels to the system, all paying the same amount. And I think that's the, the core of why the Board of Supervisors had asked the staff to come back with a recommendation on how to address some of these things. I think there was just one more. Here's a school with three hundred thousand square foot of impervious area. It's just, you know, those, the, the public properties that are very large are paying about the same as, as all the rest of the properties, big or small. Okay, so what to do about it? We, there are a lot of different ways and methods to address stormwater rates. And we looked at quite a few and had a lot of interaction with the UFOC, and it was, it was a great process and very good input, considered a lot of different things. So let me just show you a couple of the ones that were heavily considered at the beginning. This is one where, you know, we, simple, just keep what we have and increase the rates by sixty-four percent. But of course, we knew that that didn't address the, some of the inequities that were kind of hiding in those rates. So that was not considered in any great depth. So here's the method number one, which, you know, we thought, you know, maybe just take the existing structure and modify it a little bit, you know, just to keep it familiar and consistent with what currently exists. And you just simply take each of the categories and try to find a way to subdivide them by the size of the parcel. And that's what's shown there. And it's not altogether a bad approach. I think that it does create a little bit more equity. You know, charging larger parcels a little more than the smaller ones and things like that. And it keeps the same customer classes, but doesn't adequately address all the inequities, you know. And it's also, this little method, even though it was simple, it's still based on the size of the parcel and not the impervious area, which can be quite different in some cases. You know, you could have a very large, like a golf course, for example, right? That's just a very large parcel, but a very small impervious area. So it doesn't quite do the trick when, when looking at how to allocate costs. But it was, but it would be easy to implement. So then we, we did look at kind of another just simple modification of the existing structure. This one has a few more nuances, ways to bill multifamily properties, for example, based on the number of units in a complex. Kind of treats the ag and the open property as kind of a flat rate at fifty-two dollars. And then the other two, manufacturing, commercial, would be tiered by parcel size. So it's just a, just a little bit of a tweak on the, on the other one that we just looked at, but still lacks some of the, the ways to address the inequities in, in customers and customer classes. One of the other downsides of this one is you, you end up with a number of different billing methods to keep track of and creates a little bit of, you know, just a little more work there. Then we looked at, and again, apologize, there's a lot to try to see on these slides, but this is a strictly an impervious area approach. And the theory there is that, that a parcel's impervious area would be directly correlated to their bill. And that, that would be the basis for establishing their rate. And we used some prior estimates that was done, that were done by consultants some years ago, that, and we estimated you might have two hundred million square feet of impervious area. You just divide that into the, the revenue requirement. And turns out then you have about, you know, one and a half cents per square foot. And then divide that by twelve to get your monthly bill. So it's easy to analyze, but you can see some of the, the outcomes here are pretty severe. There's a property there, that public property we showed, currently pays thirty-two dollars a month. Under this scenario would pay seventeen hundred plus. And so, I mean, it's a, it's a massive increase. And, you know, while on its face, it looks like maybe it is the most equitable approach because you simply pay based on what you, you know, what you contribute. But there are other factors to consider in, you know, there's a lot of programs that equally benefit all, all customers and things like that. So this is a bit of a, maybe a severe approach and would be very, I think, difficult to implement, given the cost impacts to various customers. So in the end, what we, we developed kind of as a group is this grouped impervious area approach where rates would be based on impervious area, but customers would be grouped in categories of, of the amount of impervious area. So the existing rate structure is shown at the top. And then the proposed rate structure, excuse me, is shown down below. So as an example, with the single-family properties, a monthly rate of nine dollars and thirty-four cents. That basically was just raised from the existing rate to, by sixty-four percent to get that number. But the rest of the customers would be grouped based on the, the amount of impervious area on their property. And so you can see how that kind of breaks out and how many customers are in each group and how much revenue each group would contribute. So the impacts to some customers would still be significant. Some of the very large parcels would go from, you know, forty bucks a month roughly to two hundred and forty. That's quite a jump, but it does address their contribution to the system. And so I think there's, there's the justification for that. But it does also soften the blow to the very large parcels with large impervious areas. Instead of paying, a school paying seventeen hundred dollars a month, they're only going to be paying two hundred and forty, but it's still dramatically higher than what they currently pay. So it's a, it seems to be a happy medium and redistributes the charges to parcels that have a heavy contribution to the stormwater system. This was the approach that ultimately was recommended by the UFOC. And I, I would point out here that it, it does achieve the goal of a higher level of equity. It will however, be a little more difficult for the city to administer. It requires the city to analyze the impervious area of each non-residential parcel using aerial mapping and some of their GIS technology. So there's a bit of an effort there upfront to establish pretty carefully what each customer's contribution would be. And, and then from that point forward, it would be.
Question on that?
Yes, please.
So I can understand, because I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding the proposal here. So you're saying that the small non-residential, less than a quarter acre, you meant of impervious area, not the size of the parcel?
Thank you, that is the correct.
Not clear to me.
Thank you, yep. So when I, when I show that customer class, you're right, less than a quarter acre is impervious area, not parcel size, thank you. Very important.
No, it is.
Yeah.
I thought it was going to be easier for staff and not required because you just parcel it and that'd be that, so.
Yeah, so it's going to be a little bit more work, but I think that everybody agreed that that work was worth the greater level of equity that would be achieved.
Since we're asking questions at this point, do I read this correctly? That the totally pure impervious area way that you previously mentioned is a decrease of eighty-nine cents from the current rate? But the current, the one that's being recommended is a sixty-four percent for residential, which is, as you said, ninety percent of our. I, I don't see where there's equity there.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. So you're referring to, you know, on a strict sense, if you went with impervious, the, you know, the residential customer, if you assume thirty-six hundred square feet, would actually be lower than what it currently is. But under the proposed scenario, we're raising it. There was quite a bit of discussion about that and.
I guess there would be.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think that a lot of the, a lot of the discussion, and there's some great points made by the UFOC, that the residential customers, while they might just have a simple, small impervious area at their home, there are a lot of benefits to them through the stormwater program, like the flood mitigation. Also, a lot of the street maintenance, there's a lot of street sweeping and other things that take place as a result of the stormwater program that isn't associated with just the size of somebody's impervious area, but all those residential streets that have to be swept and maintained and things like that. And then the benefit of all of the commercial activity and other things in the community that, that, that individual homeowners and residents in the city benefit from. So there's a lot of discussion around those points that everybody felt comfortable with.
In that case, can you tell me what the other classification increases are percentage-wise?
For each of these?
Special manufacturing, et cetera.
Yeah, so, so if you look at, it kind of depends ultimately on, on how much impervious area you have. But like in a multifamily property, right now, they pay, I mean, round that up, they pay about thirty dollars a month. But if you go to, I don't want to go all the way back, but go back to some of those slides that showed like those very large multifamily properties. I mean, those ones are going to be paying as much as two hundred and forty dollars a month. So, I mean, that's a multiple of, you know, about eight. So it's a, it's a very, very large increase. But I, I appreciate that question because there was a lot of discussion back and forth. And ultimately UFOC and all of us felt that that contribution by residential customer base was justified.
I also wanted to point out that you, you don't list multifamily in there. And it almost, if you're just looking at this, it almost seems like they're lost because you're listing small, medium, large and very large, non-residential. I'm assuming that's what NR stands for.
Yes.
However, those are residential, so.
Anything over four units is considered commercial.
It is, I think, I agree with you, but to the average person, they don't look at it that way. And I, I just wanted to point out that multifamily is included in that list. I just wanted to make sure.
Can you go back to the slide that had the multifamily example that showed? It was sixty-seven hundred and thirty-three or something? Right, there was one of them that.
Like this one?
One more, I think. There you go. So that's. There you go, so that's, so that one is multifamily, right? So it has sixty-seven-forty-five, so is that a quarter acre, right? Twenty?
Yeah, it's probably going to be in that thirty-dollar-
Okay, so that parcel has no increase?
Correct.
And I guess that, so that one, in this particular model, well, I didn't want to say it wrong, twenty dollars and ninety-three, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, they go to thirty.
Yep.
But if we have a multifamily, do we have one that's large that would actually jump up into?
Only a couple of units.
Yeah, let's see. So that one has two-hundred-and-thirty-three, so that's a mobile home that has eighty-nine units, it's going to go to two-forty.
Yep. Yeah.
Across eighty-nine units.
So multifamily, there was, that was one of the categories where there was a lot of disparity between the low end and the high end.
It's two-sixty-nine a unit.
You know, you've got, you've got these tiny places that with the three, three homes paying the same amount as these really, really large properties, and so this will really distribute. Now, you know, on the low end, you're right, they don't really pay more, but you could also argue that they had been paying more than they should have been, kind of, so it just, they end up kind of staying where they are, but the bigger properties pay quite a bit more.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's go, all right, so, well, let me go back. Is there more discussion or any questions about this one at all, this, before I move on?
Better now.
Okay, all right, so this next slide shows that UFOC rightfully had asked for a phase-in approach, because there are some, as you saw, some fairly large increases, and so we came up with this proposal. Again, you can see the existing rate structure above, and a proposed structure below, where this would phase in. So January one, as Darren said, is our goal, to implement the new rates, and so instead of just go all in, we've kind of shown how, year over year, these rates would be phased, and so residential customers would kind of go halfway in January, and then, you know, since it's really, you know, on a dollar basis, not a huge increase, we just said, okay, two years, we can implement that. The small, non-residential would just go right to the thirty, and that would be, that's where they would stay. And then you can see the others, how it would play out, but with the largest impacts, being given more of a grace period, so to speak, to adjust, four-year period, every January, making some changes there, just to soften the impact. Okay, one other important outcome of our meetings with UFOC was this concept of a stormwater credit. Fairly common in stormwater utilities to find ways to incentivize compliance with the stormwater program, and this was another item that we kind of went back and forth and refined, and this is what we came up with. Staff had quite a bit of input on this one, because one of the requirements of the stormwater program is inspection of facilities. And so this was pretty clever, in my opinion, how staff basically said, well, you know, we have to go out and inspect all these, and it's really, you know, in terms of manpower, a difficult thing to do. There's just a lot of facilities out there. And so they came up with this idea that, that customers could do their own inspections and maintenance, and then just provide a simple report showing that they had completed the work. That saves the city time and effort to do those inspections, it also creates an awareness by the customer that they actually have facilities that need maintenance, and they could get a credit of one month of billing annually, if they were to take the time to do that. Don't know how popular that program's going to be, but nevertheless, it is an incentive, and if it were to work well, it would be great for both the customer and the city. So in summary, this is after all of the meetings and input, which really helped refine this, this is the slide that shows the UFOC recommendations. They recommended to approve the grouped impervious rate approach, to approve the stormwater rate phase-in approach, as shown, and also the stormwater credit system. A couple of other recommendations were to index the stormwater rates to the CPI beginning July first of 2024, which is after the full phase-in. However, the last bullet there also, and we need to explain this clearly, recommended that we conduct a rate refresh study every five years, so that the program does not go on autopilot. It will receive a thorough review every five years. And if, for example, an increase of something more than the CPI or less needed to be implemented, that that would, those changes would take place and be reviewed every five years. The UFOC also recommended, I think, consistent with what we're doing in water and sewer, to consider providing a ten-thousand-dollar fund annually to help with the utility rate payer assistance program. So if there were customers, residential or commercial, that were in need, the city would have the ability to help those customers through a tough time. That is the conclusion of my presentation, so I will turn it back over to you.
Well, I think that we, the five of us, find ourselves in the unenviable position of choosing between doing the right thing or caving to public opinion. We have a whole stack of public comment here, saying everything from, we're stealing money from the general fund, to we should be recalled, to we're crooks. But at the end of the day, I think that the same people that have provided public comment, disapproving where they think we're going with this, will have a problem with us if their home floods, and their home is unhabitable or causes damage. What this comes down to, for me, is that we need to invest in our infrastructure, and just like water rates, we live in the desert, we did a rate study, we tried to come up with an equitable system, and we implemented rate increases, because we live in the desert, and water is a precious commodity, and that's the cost of living in Carson City, Nevada. I look at this system the same way. We live in an area where we have alluvial fan flooding from summer rainstorms and from winter snow runoff, and we need to deal with that the best way we can. This is the cost of doing business and living here, and therefore, you know, we're going to have to make a hard decision. One of the items that I would propose, when I look at the, at the chart on the grouped impervious area approach, so if you go back two sides, yes, right there. So to me, this makes sense when you look at the proposed rate structure on the bottom. If we're going to go with a thirty, sixty, one-twenty, two-forty rate for the groups, then it makes sense to me that the single-family property rate should be fifteen dollars, which could be phased in over a four-year period. So year one would be seven-fifty, year two, ten dollars, year three, twelve-fifty, and year four, fifteen dollars. That raises-
Run up on me again.
So, right now, look at the bottom chart. It says nine-thirty-four, thirty, sixty, twenty, one-forty, or two-forty.
Right.
It makes sense to me that if you're going to group it that way and come up with that pricing, that then the single-family property rate should be fifteen dollars. And that could be done over a four-year phase-in period. That would raise an additional million dollars a year in revenue for the stormwater utility fund. One of my concerns is that we're trying to increase revenue to the bare bones to meet our priority improvements, and we're not necessarily accounting for emergency improvements or what we really should be doing. So I hate to run a utility fund based on, on the bare bones. I think we've spent the last four or five years trying to determine how not to do that in the water and sewer utility funds, and we've been taking baby steps on the stormwater utility fund, and if we're going to fix this, and we're going to bite the bullet, and we're going to take the heat for it, then let's just do it right from day one. So I think that's the majority of my comments.
John, so far's Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brad and I often agree on things, on this one, we don't. Can you answer me in terms of stormwater runoff, how, is there any percentage guesstimate, I'll call it that, model, that tells us how much the impervious surface situation affects the stormwater during, say, a huge gully washer rainstorm or other kinds of runoff? Is it a hundred percent, sixty percent, ninety percent? I really don't know, but I've always been told, and I, during my other lifetime, covered water for a great deal of time in the state of Nebraska, where water's almost as important as it is here. So can you tell me why the impervious surface is the best model to use?
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that the city has a model that shows exactly, you know, what the impervious area contribution is to, say, runoff, but, but it is a widely accepted method in stormwater utility setting for, for a community to look at the impervious area. For example, right now, the city of Reno is in the process of establishing a stormwater utility, right, that, you know, they're very typical, where all of their stormwater fees and costs are buried into their sewer fund, but they're going to break that out, and they're using the strict impervious area method as a model for doing that. So there's a well-known tie between the impervious area and the amount of runoff contributed by a certain property.
And that's the way I understood it. I just don't understand, A, you've made my residence thirty-six hundred feet, some of it's lawn, some of it's impervious, but I don't have thirty-six hundred feet. Some people have huge areas-
Yep.
-but much of it's not impervious. I'm really troubled by a situation where ninety percent of the people in this town who live in houses are going to pick up that sixty-four percent, forgetting the rest of it, and I understand, I'm leaving everything else out, but if you went, according to your figures, by a strict impervious surface, it would be a decreased residences. Can you tell me which is easier to administer? You said that your modeling type, grouping type, is not easy to administer, and you said that it would be tough to administer the impervious surface purely, purely, which is easier?
Well, those two would be comparable, really, in terms of management, because you'd have to determine the impervious area of every parcel.
Thank you. Brad, we're just off on a different way, wave here. I don't, I don't think our residents need to pay more for their little impervious surface than others are paying. I think it's impervious surface, that's what I was taught when I covered for the Omaha World Herald, matters of water and the state government in Lincoln. Thank you.
Darren?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may add, the question about, about the impervious and, and the impacts of businesses and residential, I just, I just want to repeat a little bit of a discussion that we had at the UFOC level, and that was specifically related to the storms that we had in seventeen and eighteen, which were the last big flooding events that we had here in Carson City. And everybody will remember those storms, I remember them very, very closely, but that, that flooding and that's, and those two storms, that had very, very little to do with impervious area in Carson City, and it had mostly to do with the water that was coming down from the mountains around us and trying to flow through our city to get to the river. So it wasn't an issue of massive parking lots causing, causing water to run into our streets, it was the, it was the swollen rivers that were coming down and coming through our community. So that's an example of, of how, how would, how do you charge somebody for that? And, and that was a big discussion, and part of UFOC is, it's not a, it's really difficult to get a perfect, a perfect analysis of what each raindrop contributes, because they come at us in so many different ways. And then when we do get rain showers, I mean, you'll, we can, it can be raining on the north side of town and dry on the south side of town, I mean, it's, we don't get those just nice, gentle rains, and everything gets covered the same, so to come up with a, with a mechanism that, that really gets it equal is extremely difficult.
Go, I'm sorry, Chief. Go. I, you know, to Darren's point, it's been my experience that impervious surface certainly contributes a portion to the stormwater program, but the part that Brad mentioned, the fact that we live in a valley, the fact that we live, a lot of our residents live on alluvial fans, which are, by their nature, subject to runoff flooding in rain events, and the fact that the lowest point in town is the river, meaning every bit of water we have that comes in a storm is going to go from wherever it falls to the river. So the, the impervious surface thing is important, but, but it isn't the only thing. I, so I agree with Darren. What I'm struggling with on this is that, you know, ninety percent of the people are residents, are single-family homes that contribute to this, and unlike water or sewer, this doesn't directly benefit every one of those residential properties. It's, the connection between someone paying money for water and sewer is easy to see in the eyes of residents, because they flush their toilet every day, and they use water every day. It's difficult for them to see the connection between paying more for stormwater that benefits them once every fifteen years, and I realize I'm oversimplifying it, but, so I guess that's my struggle, and combine that with something completely unrelated to stormwater, but, you know, we, we have to find a way to fix our roads, and I know that one of the things we're talking about is a potential road utility model, or that we're going to investigate. So as we begin to look at those things, I'm struggling with the relative importance of this versus the relative importance of that, even though that's at some future point, it's going to come here, and if we decide that that's a way we're going to go, that's another fee we're going to put on people's plates. So I, I'm not in support of Brad's proposal in terms of raising the residential rate beyond what's recommended. I don't know whether I'm going to vote on this quite yet. If, I'd be more amicable if we took the monthly residential rate and amortized it over the four years. I realize it isn't a lot, it's, what, three dollars and sixty-five cents? So it's roughly eighty-nine cents a year if you do it over those four years. I guess I'd be a little more comfortable doing that. I realize it takes us a little longer to get where you want to get doing that, so that's kind of the way I feel right now. What was the public testimony at UFOC, if there was any?
I think it was fairly limited at the UFOC meetings. We did have a few come to, well, we had a public workshop, where there were a couple of people there, and then we had a few people show up, and I think the staff took several comments via, like, email and things like that. And I think that, you know, the, one of the strong takeaways I had from that was that for the commercial properties that had very large impervious areas, they were concerned about a strict impervious method, you know, just because, and they would really get hit hard, and I think the point's been made here that impervious is not the only factor in determining rates, and so that was one of the major outcomes there. You know, we didn't hear a lot from residents, we heard mostly from commercial customers, and I think that was one of their primary concerns, and then they-
Did you take that into consideration, did the UFOC take that, that comment into consideration, coming up with a recommendation here today?
Oh, yes, I believe so. I think we, we were careful to think about and address all the public comment.
So that is a big issue before us, then, what happens with the residential customers?
Well, it sounds like it today, yeah.
That's the biggest issue?
Well, I don't know, Darren, do you, is that what it seems like to you?
Yeah, Brent summed it up perfectly. It's, it's when we started the initial discussion about stormwater and we started looking at some of those methods of computing it, and one being strictly impervious, and that number of, you know, $1,800 per month got out there, well, it, it generated some calls and, and some visits. That was all part of the public comment that went into the, you know, the discussion with the UFOC in terms of trying to settle on something to where, you know, it's, it's, it's more practical and it, it spreads stuff around. And that's ultimately how we ended up with what we're proposing here today was a, was a, was a bit of a mixed bag of trying to consider all that public comment. But I do not want to speak for the UFOC being that Mike is here, so if you want to hear from him, well, we can call him up if, if desired.
Mayor, can I make one, one comment?
Go.
I, I spoke to a couple of, of commercial folks who are now paying, very small commercial people. One, one's an insurance provider, one's a hairdresser. They own the building, they pay more than they feel they should. So, so on the one side, there is absolutely an inequity, as you pointed out, you know. So I, I wanted to make sure that that got on the record because there is, there is an inequity, and this does fix that in a lot of ways.
Go. Sorry.
And a couple of notes I forgot in my earlier comments to bring up. There's a couple of exemptions that we would need to discuss that were actually referred to in the presentation, but then there was no information on it. One of those is RO or GEO zone properties that are used, well, I guess it would just be RO. RO zone properties that are used for, as a primary residence and not as a commercial use. Dave Dolly collects that information as part of his tax assessment for the tax cap. So I'd think there'd be a way that we could have a form that somebody could fill out if they're using an RO zone property as their primary residence to be, to get the residential rate rather than the non-residential rate. The other one that we didn't discuss, Darren, you and I have discussed this in the past, along with Dan Stuckey. We have properties in town that have multiple parcels that are part of the same ownership that comprise a single property. One of those is the Carson Nugget that I think had at one point over 100 different parcels. The Realtor Building, I think, was three, two or three different parcels. So they're paying, they're being charged the stormwater rate for every parcel currently rather than for the overall ownership of the parcel. So I don't know if there's been any additional discussions on that item at the UFOC or amongst staff, but that would be another one that I would think that we would want to look at some sort of an exemption form, because that would require Public Works to actually go out and do an inspection to make sure that there's not multiple uses on the property, that it's a single-use property. One thing I wanted to address on, on John's comments are that when the stormwater utility initially got started, the board had a rate study done. When the rate study came back, the numbers were so large that they basically shelved the study and they started the enterprise fund with a minimal fee, which at that time I believe a dollar a parcel. Then over time, it was raised slightly to where it is today, but there was no methodology behind it. It was basically just seed money to start the enterprise fund. That, when I read this presentation, is what the proposed residential rate, that's the method it still follows. There's no methodology there. It's just a 64% increase on top of the 30% increase that was based on no scientific method. We're just trying to get to a revenue figure. So to me, again, I just think that if we are going to invest in our infrastructure, we know what needs to be done to the system. We have a very good idea of what the cost of that is, that our job, whether the public agrees with us or not, is to make that decision and invest in our infrastructure and do the best job we can for long-term planning and kind of let the cards fall where they, where they fall. I mean, that is our job, whether we like it or not. And I understand the financial hardship that this places on everybody, especially today with the unemployment rate the way it is. We can kick this can down the road for another year or two years, or like we've already done for 30 years. But at some point, and this board and previous boards have done a really great job at cleaning up all the issues, outstanding issues where the can did kick down the road, this is just on that list for me. So to me, it's like, okay, let's make the hard decision, let's fix this problem and fix it right from day one and move forward. I mean, that's what we've done with other problems.
Thank you. Well, can I reply to that?
You know, I, I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but I had a discussion with our old city manager, Nick Morano, one day, and I think if I've told you this, it stopped me, but, you know, what he, he told me that, you know, when he first came to Carson City, he came over Lakeview Hill, looked down in this valley, you know, he's a retired Colonel, Marine Colonel. He looked at it and he said, you know, this is not very well-defensible space right here because everything that comes off those mountains has to go one way and it goes right through your city. I, you know, and I think we sometimes forget that. I mean, sometimes because we live in a, in an area, you know, where sometimes you get a lot of rain, sometimes we don't. But at the end of the day, that's the only place it can go. And, you know, I, I tend to agree with Brad in, in, in a way that, you know, if we're going to bite the bullet, we ought to bite the bullet, but, but I, because I think that at the end of the day, you know, we will suffer property damage that is, that, you know, is more costly than what these rates are, you know, would, the hardship is more costly than what these rates would cause. You know, and I think that what we did, when we, when, when the residential rate was put in, was put in based on the theory, the rev, the, the rate study theory of value of service. I mean, which is just a guess. You know, what, what is it that, you know, we have to do to make people, to make folks more happy with the rates? Even though it may not have a cost basis, I think that's where, you know, we are, to a certain extent, we're still there. So, you know, I, I too, this is a horrible time to be doing, even talk about raising anything, but it, it is what it is. So I'd be interested to hear what the other board members say. That's where I kind of fall down here. If there was a way where we could amortize out the, the residential rate a couple of years, you know, maybe that works too. But I think that we ought to look carefully at what we're doing here, because the last thing we want to do is kick the can down to the next board, or boards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd, I'd like to reply to what you say because you're agreeing with Brad, what, what Brad said. And I don't want anybody in this room to think that I think we should kick any cans down any road. I'm the last guy who wants to do that. I think infrastructure and maintenance, as you all know, are two of the primary things that a city government needs to do. My problem with this situation is I don't like the model that we're being handed by the UFOC. And I would be interested in hearing from Mike Bennett, if, you know, his comments.
We could hear from Ben.
But, but, but I, I'm going to be having a lot of problem supporting this if other classifications, as presented to us, are getting an increase that is less than the 90% of the people who live in houses in this town. That's, I just want to say that. I'm not against what we're trying to do here. I don't want anybody to make a mistake that I am. What I'm against is the kind of massaging that will end up having 90% of the people in this town bearing a higher burden than any other group. So I, I want to hear more. Thank you.
Sir Ronald? Mike, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, or good morning, I should say, board supervisors. Mike Bennett, current chair-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Got the wrong name there.
That's okay. You had it right when I was sitting back there. Mike Bennett, current chair of the UFOC. You know, to, to go back a little bit, the hearings for the, for this item have started at the UFOC about this time last year. It's been in front of the committee four times. I think Brent was pretty generous when, with your time by only showing you a few of the methods that we reviewed. I counted no less than half a dozen different methods and iterations of those methods that we reviewed. The concern about a disproportionate share to the residents was a primary concern. The reality, though, that, that we were really struggling with was the fact that the utility fund is one, the stormwater utility fund is one that has consistently failed to meet the targets established in the financial policy. You couple that with the need of the utility fund to be able to provide more service to the residents of the community, and there, it's clear that we needed to, that Public Works needed to institute some sort of rate increase to be able to provide those services. You look at the rate increase, and we understood from the board of supervisors before we took up this agenda item, that equality was a main concern as well. So a lot of the UFOC committee members tended to shift toward the, the pure impervious approach. Because of that, it, it generates what's perceived as the most equality. However, when you factor that into that disproportionate cost, you know, we pointed to the one property that was, I think, $30 a month now, or $60 a month now, and it goes to $1,700 a month, that happens to be Carson City High School. Right? So that needs to be funded by somebody. It's still going to be funded by the taxpayers of the community. We also took into account that if we do put more of a, of a share or more of a load, if you will, on the larger properties, they tend to be commercial properties, and the residents of the Carson City will end up paying those fees eventually through increased costs of groceries, increased costs of, at the restaurant, increased costs of a, of a car dealership. So ultimately, the residents of the city, the residents of the community are still paying that portion of, are still paying that stormwater charge. We also noted that the, there's a, there's a big burden that goes into administering a impervious-only approach. And we didn't feel it was appropriate because, I mean, the goal of the, of the, of this stormwater fund, as well as the rate increase associated with it, is to provide more services within the community, not to provide a higher administrative burden and bureaucracy for the residents to pay for. So when we factored those all in, we really did come back with the grouped impervious approach is an attempt to strike that balance between the rate increase, trying to put a, a larger share on some of the larger generators, but also recognizing that the residents of the community are still going to be paying the lion's share of that stormwater rate, whether it's directly on their bill or whether it's through increased costs and services or tax rates through other, other entities in the city that are impacted. I wanted to mention something when it was talked about, the value to the residents. And it was brought up that sometimes, you know, my property, I, I'm a civil engineer by training. I put a lot of effort when we bought our home to make sure we weren't buying our home in a location that could be impacted by floods, but I still take advantage of a, of a community that is not impacted by floods by having roads that are passable during a storm event, not having facilities that I enjoy regularly, parks and trail systems and whatnot, that are destroyed during, during storm events. So even though I may not have an improvement or a need for an improvement adjacent to my property, I still take advantage of those, of those scenarios, of those advantages. One of the last things I'd like to add to, to Brad's comment about wanting to increase the rate on the residential, that, I can't speak for what the, the Utility Finance Oversight Committee would say because we didn't take that item up. I can tell you that the UFOC was routinely concerned, consistently concerned about the stormwater utility not meeting its obligations with regards to the financial policy, and consequently, it also could not meet its obligations with regards to capital improvement program. So I don't know if I fully answered your questions on impervious versus the proposed approach to residential, but it, it was an item that was talked about quite a bit. And at the end of a, a year and four meetings and however many different other iterations, we realized that really there's no perfect approach. What we want to do is try to make, come up with a system that is more equitable than it is today, than it stands today, which we think the grouped impervious does that, but also generates additional revenue for the fund.
Okay. Other comments or questions for the board? Go.
Just Mike's comments and John's comments, and maybe this would have been helpful, John, if I'd have said this upfront, but I've been meeting with Public Works for the last eight years, looking at stormwater rates and the history of the utility fund. And the conclusion that I have come to after eight years of looking at this is that there is no equitable system out there. There, there just isn't. I mean, we have literally talked about dozens, dozens of different, different ways to look at this, and all of them have significant equity problems. I look at this system and say it's the most equitable thing that I have seen come up yet.
The group system.
The, the group system, right, based on impervious surface. That doesn't mean I like it. It means that I think that it's the best solution that we can come up with, or we can choose to ignore the problem for another 30 years. So that's where I go on this, is that I agree with you. I'd love to see an equitable system. I personally don't believe that one exists, based on eight years of conversations with, with Darren and going back to Danny Roder and Dan Stuckey. We had these conversations over and over and over and gone down into the weeds to look at the details and how it'd have to be implemented and the cost of implementation. And is it truly equitable? And in my opinion, in every single case, the answer is no, it's not equitable at the end of the day.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly always willing to be convinced, but one of the things I'll have to have to convince me is an actual readout of how this group situation falls on everybody regarding the 60%. I'm, I'm starting from the 60%. And your point about it wasn't equitable to start with, it wasn't based on anything except we got to get this scheme going and we'll fund it at a buck and then a buck 30, all the rest of that. I don't, I don't quarrel with that. And you have been around four years longer than I have, and I know you've cared about this a great deal. Just, it's just a bad time to be laying things on any of these classifications. But it's a particularly bad time to have what amounts to a two-thirds increase on the residents of this town, many of whom either are in rental properties who, their, their owners will then pass it on, so talking about passing it on. And so I want to see that it gets as equitable as it can. So if you can provide me with that at some point, obviously, we're not going to do a, a final action today. I'm certainly willing to go forward and not kick the can down the road, but I want to see what each classification is getting for a percentage increase in relationship to the residences. And then I may be persuadable. Or maybe we can tweak it.
Mayor, can I ask you a question about the utility rate assistance program? Did, did that, Mike or whomever, did, did that $10,000 amount come out of some analysis or was it just pulled out of thin air? In terms of its sufficiency to help?
If you'd like, I can actually answer that. Because URAP was originally put together when we were doing these rate increases, and we actually have, FISH is the purveyor of that program for us. And so they had applications that they had to turn away and couldn't do because we only had so much in the fund. And so $9,000, so we just rounded to $10,000.
So it, so it came-
It was based on a-
It came up as actual-
Analysis.
Yeah, it was a sort of analysis.
Right.
Back-of-napkin-type analysis, but-
No, but it was based on people-
Applications.
People wanting to come in and get assistance, and we had to turn them away because we didn't have any money-
Okay.
-in the fund.
Thank you.
Is, is that fund growing now or does it need more money?
There's $0 in the fund.
We didn't get the piece on the bill yet that's supposed to have the line for the people to donate. If you recall, we were going to add the electronic and the bill pay, but we're not, we don't have the utility piece put in place yet. That got delayed because of all of our other computer programs. And so that's why there might be a one time-
Weren't we going to do a roundup thing? Weren't we going to do a roundup thing on the bill? Isn't that what we were going to do if you wanted to round up?
Or they could do a flat dollar amount, whatever they wanted to do. So we just never got that part put in place because of the ERP systems and stuff. And that's why there's no money in it, and that's why the proposal is we could start it and kick it off, and then we're supposed to be going live with the utility fund sometime this year? Maybe next year? That's why this is in here, is we don't want to have an impact, just what I feel like you do, John, that I don't want to do rate increases that force people to pick between paying a bill and a prescription, and for some families, I'm going to say there's probably about 200 of them, if I can remember, Darren, on our utility list for all those rate assist- I think it was around 200, and so that was the other reason we looked at what we would be subsidizing with the rate increases anyway.
So I have a question-
The $10,000 would give us a comfort zone, that we're not putting someone out of their home over a rate.
I have a question about that, and that is, $10,000, and then we'd still do that, and it would increase from there if people donated, is that what you're saying? Okay.
And then we could back off of our subsidy in the future-
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying, you'd start with the 10, and then you'd add to it by this.
Right, utility funding. Yeah, it's just a gap, I guess, is the right way to say this again, Phil.
Thank you.
Well, I suppose there's a way where you could say, you know, we're not going to do anything, I'm raising anything until the virus is gone, or we have it under control. I'm not certain, if that doesn't create more uncertainty than we have right now. You know, because I don't, I don't know when that would, would happen. Things change, but, I don't know.
Mr. Farr wants to weigh in, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to address one of John's comments about the relative impact of these rates on residents versus other customer classes or, or size of property. So, just, just crunched a couple numbers here. So the single-family customer class would be impacted about 64%, which, you know, it's a significant increase. But if you look at, so the average roughly of the other types of properties, say it's, say their current bill is, is $35 as an average right now. For, for those who stay at that $30 rate, that's great. They don't really have an impact. In fact, some of them might get a bit of a reduction. However, for the rest, it's, it's quite significant. I mean, if you fall in that medium category, you're going to see an increase, you know, almost double. So you're, you're approaching 100% increase for those customers, and it just goes, you know, quite high beyond that. The, the large properties are looking at about a, you know, a 350% increase, and then a, almost a 700% increase for the very large customers. And so, as it, as it turns out, except for those properties that are considered small, the balance of the customers impacted here will have greatly higher impacts than the residential customer class. So I just want to kind of throw some of those numbers out for consideration.
Thank you. So what you're saying to me, and I'm sorry to keep getting up, but I just had some eye surgery a few weeks ago, and I have to get up to read it.
Sure.
What you seem to be saying to me is that commercial and manufacturing will go up markedly, but multifamily and public won't.
Well, no, it, no, it depends on, some of those multifamily properties will be impacted greatly, and we looked at a couple of those.
Larger ones.
The larger ones. It just depends on how large of a parcel it is, but if, if they're very small, less than a quarter acre of impervious area, they'll, they'll roughly stay where they currently are. But the balance of those properties will see significant increases, and I think that, that that's fair, but I just wanted to point out that-
And-
Yeah, go ahead.
And why do you think that's fair?
Well, what I mean there is that for the small ones, I think that they've been paying probably more than their fair share, relative to the larger ones.
In the current situation.
Yeah.
So, you, all right, I guess I understand. I still don't think everybody in town has a 3,500 square foot house.
Well, that's, that's a fact. I, I think just out of ease of, I mean, the, the amount of work required to calculate every home would just be phenomenal, I think. So that, there was a study done by AMAC years ago that concluded that that was the average, and so, but I agree, John.
Okay, board. I don't know, I don't know how this is going to come out, or file statement that, you know, law school professor told me everything comes out okay, in the wash, if you've got a good enough washing machine. I don't know where we are, but we want to try a motion, we'll get some discussion out of where we are, some point of discussion.
Mayor, can I request that we go to the page marked UFOC Recommendations, and we just go through the bullet points?
Sure.
Because I think that staff wanted direction on all of these items.
Sure. Let me get to that, hold on a minute.
477.
Okay, go.
Page 477.
Okay, let's take each one, then. Want to try it?
Well, I would love to try it, but I think I'm going to get voted down.
Well, no, but I think, I think you, you know, I don't know.
I mean, let me, go ahead. I, I move to approve the grouped impervious rate method with one change to the single-family property rate. With, in year one, the single-family property rate would be 750. In year two, $10. Year three, $1,250. And year four, $15.
I'll second that. Want to discuss it? All right. Nope. That's kind of what I had going. I didn't, I wasn't going that up high on the residential and on the out years, but that's all right, I see where you are. Okay, on the motion, we'll see where it goes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Failed, three to two. Three against, two for. Okay. Anybody want to try another motion? Silence is golden.
How about we try just, I move to approve the grouped impervious rate method.
Well, we could try each one of those. I mean, anybody have any heartburn with one of those in particular?
Oh, you mean on this whole thing?
Yeah, on the schedule, on the recommendation.
I want to talk about indexing, but the rest I'm okay with.
Sorry, what was your motion? Is there any to plug here?
Well, the discussion that the mayor is suggesting is we could potentially just have a motion that says we accept the recommendations of the UFOC as one motion instead of each Or do we want to go each item? That's the question.
I think for discussion purposes, I'd be fine doing it as a group, but then we could, well-
Is there any one component piece on here we just want to pull out and talk about, and the rest is okay?
For me, the one that, the one, the one that concerns me, I mean, even though I could go for it, is the CPI.
Yeah, me too.
And I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I don't know if that's what government should be doing, is doing things by automatic.
I agree. That's the one I want to strike, the rest of it.
And for me, I'm okay with the phase-in, but I'd like to modify the phase-in, as I said.
Okay. Three or four years for the residential?
Yes.
Darren, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. May I ask Darren a question?
Sure.
I'm so sorry, but I just cannot remember the, the dollars that are going to be in the increase in the other two funds, because I think the cumulative impact is important to me, and I think you're also right, that the public doesn't understand the difference between the water bill, their sewer bill, their stormwater bill. What they see is the word Carson City Utilities, $100.87, and that rate's going to go up. Can you remind me, I want to, I want to understand what we're doing in January when they get their utility bill. So how much was our water, and how much was our sewer rate increase?
So, for the, the water rate, what we had agreed upon would, it would, it would go up 3%, and that would be, we didn't, we're not changing the users in water, it's, it's across the board.
It's 3%.
And then on wastewater, it's 3.5%.
3.5. But do you know on the single-family resident about how much that was? I was trying to remember, is that between the two of them, like $6?
It's less than $6.
Okay.
It's less than $6, for sure. I think it's-
It's like a $1.30 on the sewer bill, and?
Yeah, the water's obviously, I think the water's, you know, it's going to be closer to, the, the average water residential bill is, you know, in the $60 range, so 3%.
$2, $2, $3.
I think it was 3 something, 3.35 sticks in my head.
Somehow.
For total, for both of them?
I was like, we're under 6 for them both, right?
Yes.
Sounds about right, but I do-
But we did, I just want to point out, because you, you guys were talking about the CPI, we approved the CPI component for both stormwa, for both water and, and wastewater.
That's correct.
That's right.
I stand corrected. I stand fixed.
Doesn't mean it's, so let me say on that, the one thing I don't like is that's what we did in the waste management, that I'm getting bothered by is we have all these automatic CPIs, that we're never seeing the cumulative impact to the customers. Like, it's not one bill, there's 10 things that they've done, and next thing you know, they're at $35 more. So while it always sounds great to say, oh, I only raised this $1.22, but I raised this one $1.90, and I raised this one, so I guess what concerns me about the automatics is we're not looking at cumulative impact. I do understand for the fund, and maybe that's the compromise with what Supervisor Bonkowski was trying to get to, to increase the residential, I just think that 15 was too much to take a jump to do that. Maybe the CPI is the compromise, that the fund has ongoing stability, which is what I'm assuming, that you're using the CPI component, but what CPI? I also didn't see that noticed, because I know something in the waste management, I should have been a little more on the uptick, as to which CPI index we're using, because it matters. The index matters. And so I didn't see what index were you, is recommended here.
Thank you. Those, those are great comments. The Consumer Price Index is, is the federal index, and so that's the one we'd be using.
But that index has like 50 indexes in it. So there's one for utilities, there's one for North American Garbage Services, or whatever it is.
Oh.
No, what I'm telling you is, yeah, it's a huge basket study of CPIs.
Supervisor Bagwell, my recollection was that the, the cost adjuster was intended to be a construction cost index. That was discussed at the UFOC.
Because you're assuming that most of all the stormwater fees are construction-based.
Yeah.
But there's no cap either. Are we recommending a cap that, like we did, like, won't exceed 5% in any year, won't exceed 3%? 3?
That's what we did on water and wastewater. Yeah, and I believe that was discussed as well, although we didn't take specific action on what the cap would be.
Well, I'm just letting you know, I can't do a CPI without a cap. I just can't do that, because the construction could come out 32%-
Exactly.
-in any one given year, and that's the-
It could be much higher.
-the safety net, I think, that the mayor and I are, I won't speak for him, but that's what was bothering me with just a, a wide-open CPI, so.
Well, we should, I, I feel like we should be consistent. I mean, if, if we have the CPI in wastewater and water, then, if we're going to do this, then we should have it here, and it should be the same, in terms of the cap.
Say that again, please.
I'm just saying that it should be the same. It, it either, it, it doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't have a CPI in stormwater when we have it in water and wastewater.
Yeah, that convinced me. I, I forgot that we did that on water.
And, and I think the cap is, the cap should be equal as well. There definitely should be a cap.
In my recollection, on water and wastewater, again, it was tied to construction costs. So I, I would recommend that you just use the same.
Recommend what, Mike?
I would recommend you use the same index as we use in water and wastewater.
Well, and, and if we didn't cap the prior two, and we just used, we did, again, I, I want consistency, and if not, bring those two back and we'll cap it.
No, we capped it at 3%, I believe. And Mike, hold on, I, I want to make sure we're on the same page on the CPI, because I can't remember, I, I might be getting confused with Reno, but the, sometimes the connection fees we connect with the CCI and the monthly user rates, the CPI, does that ring a bell here? Did, did we talk about that? What, what did we cap? What did we use, Darren, for the water sewer? Was it CPI or CCI?
I just, I just don't remember. I apologize.
This is to send, send you back and bring- Just bring us-
To be consistent, that's what we're telling you.
Right.
Be making it consistent.
Good. Thank you.
I, I just pulled up the water and sewer item, and it says CPI with a minimum of 0% and a maximum of 3%.
Say that again, please.
That it would be based on CPI with a minimum of 0% and a maximum of 3%.
Okay.
Are we still under discussion on this? Is it not that particular?
The motion's dead. The motion's dead, so, you know, we're just talking here. What I'm trying to do is figure out if there's a way where we can have a motion that might pass today. If not, we're going to have to kick it down the road, and everybody's going to have to think about it. You know, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, my own personal view on rates is that they ought to be cost-based rates, not value-of-service rates, not, not what I think is good for somebody. And that's why I think it, it's kind of a trap to, to, to walk in and say, you know, this person can afford that, this person can't, we'd never get over that. So the only way I know out of that is to say, these are the costs, and you have to make sure that you're monitoring the costs as best you can, that you're providing efficient government, and as long as you're doing that, I don't know how you'd get around people having to pay for that type of stuff, but, you know, there's always, I'm old enough to know that you always learn, so.
Well, I hate to full rank, but I'm even older, and I hope I can still learn. My problem here is, what we've got is, we've got a hole in this thing in terms of equity, and recognizing the valid points that you and Brad have made, and, and Stacy and Lori, I just can't live with a situation that is brought to me as an equitable, or even slightly equitable, way to do this, when the residences are going up 64%, and the manufacturing, they're even going up more, and then there's this hole in the middle that's not going up hardly at all. It just doesn't work for me, and I don't think it works for anybody in the city. That's my problem. So, I don't mind if we take it away from manufacturing and lower theirs, but this, this hole in the middle is like a hole in a doughnut.
That's the, that's-
There's nothing there.
That's the analysis, and, you know, I understand what you're saying about that, but a, a move like that, without tying it to cost, I think it's a mistake. So, here's my, here's my two cents, guys, because we could be here arguing about this same as the UFOC did. I'm going to ask that the staff bring this back in, in a couple of weeks. Take a look at what we've got here in terms of what your, what the comments were today, see if you could massage something, you know, put, put aside my little comment about costs, being that you'll know where I'm coming from on it. But I think, you know, if you want to phase in different things, give it a shot. But I think we need to, we need, I don't think we're ready to vote today, it's my sense. Otherwise, I call for a vote.
I think we can do it.
All right, let's try a motion, see where it goes.
Want me to try it? So, I move approval of the UFOC recommendations with the indexing on the stormwater rate to be consistent with the two other funds, with the cap of the 3%.
Okay. Is there a second to that? I don't know what that says.
I'll second for discussion.
I, I don't know what that says in terms of approval of the rates or not.
We just did. It's all of these.
Well, those are the recommendations.
That's what I do. Just have them bring it back to us this way.
Right.
So, on the question, would you consider a modification to allow a phase-in of the residential rate?
Over three years?
Over four.
Why don't we match the large, see, the medium is two, the large, non-residential is three.
I'm okay with three.
Oh, three? I could live with that, and then we can be done. I could live with it.
Well, we don't know if we're done, but-
I know. Well, maybe, maybe, but I could live with that.
So, I will second.
Okay. So, the grouped impervious rate, that's a good word, method would take the single-family and make that over a three-year implementation, but otherwise, the UFOC recommendations you would bring back to us. And the stormwater is a max 3%.
Say that again, I, I didn't get that.
So, the motion is that the staff will be bringing back the UFOC recommendations with a change in the single-family property line to spread it over three years instead of two years. of two years, and that the indexing will mirror that and the other two funds that capped it at three percent.
All right. Brad?
And I would ask that we also either direct staff or include in the motion to bring back recommendations on our own properties and multiple properties for a single, single use.
The, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Second or agrees.
All right. Further discussion on the motion? Everybody clear on what it is? Everybody know that we made the best wag we can?
Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, before that vote carries, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, I don't want to be the one to, you know, to be the wet blanket here. I just want to make sure that.
Be the wet blanket.
Yeah, before there's a vote, you know, that's recorded, I just want to be sure that everybody in this room understands that we're not actually adopting, you know, any particular rate. I know that there are recommendations included as part of this motion, but there's not an actual approval or an adoption of any established rate. This is simply just to kind of kickstart the initiation process, you know, because we have to bring this back as an ordinance. So just because the board is recommending staff to bring back certain, you know, additional recommendations, and we're adopting, you know, a quasi-rate, I guess I would say, you know, in the sense that this is what the board would probably want to proceed with, it does not mean that this board is bound to those rates, you know, that we have a general sense of what we would like to proceed with at such time, you know, and action items brought back again before this body, which would actually be the adoption of the ordinance. And of course, that has to go through two additional hearings.
That's not a wet blanket. That's what I understand the motion to be.
Okay.
As it said for staff to bring it back.
Yeah, just wanting to be absolutely clear about that, so, all right, thank you.
Wet blanket, okay. Further discussion? Do we need more discussion on this one? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
All right, three to two. All right, passed, okay.
Mayor?
The two wings just said no.
Sound good.
So this is democracy in action, folks. I don't know how many other people, boards go through this. This is, this is what democracy is all about, so. And some of us get mad, or get, not mad, but get upset personally. And, oh, I'm a cost of service guy, and what I think we're doing here is just value of service to each individual, and I don't think that's the proper way of doing it, but to move the ball and to get the infrastructure going, I'm willing to go down that road. Okay? All right. Anything else on this one? All right. What do you want to do now? You want to take a break?
I was just gonna, well, we could take a break, but I was going to ask, too, if we could go back to fourteen A and fourteen B.
No.
They've, they have it ready, and
You need it.
They're holding on the line.
What do we, we did that all as one motion, then?
Yeah.
Well, we need to, we need the new language.
Right.
All right. Do you want to take a break first?
Okay, we'll take a, let's see.
Just a couple minutes. Be right back.
Okay. On fourteen A?
Are we, are we in recess, Mayor?
Yeah, no, we're not going to recess. We got to, we got to go back. We did motions on the hospital stuff, but we needed to break it into. You okay?
Yep.
All right, let's take a motion on fourteen A.
I got it. I, I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the amendment to clause one G as presented in the record.
Very good.
Today.
There's a motion and a.
Get it out there so I can read it.
It's right behind you.
I know.
Thank you. You can't do anything on here. You can't see it either.
You okay, John?
I think so. I assume that the hospital has been involved in this language change.
Okay, did we, I was fixed, focused on John there. Do we have a motion on this one? Fourteen A?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, on the motion, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Let's do fourteen Bravo.
Let me get my glasses on. I move to approve the declaration of restrictions incorporating the late material posted on the city's website and properly identified there, and authorize the mayor to approve and execute any, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute the declaration.
Close enough.
Yep.
Okay. On a motion, discussion? Here you can see, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay. Thank you both for the motions on those. Dan, are you okay with those?
Very good, and I will also.
You're the war blanket, man, quit, you know?
All right. I'll also say for the record, I think, Mr.
Let's do the ambulance fund.
Yeah, I think Supervisor Better was saying earlier, he was making an assumption that the CTH was okay with that language. I do want to confirm on the record that we have written confirmation from CTH that they're amenable to that language.
Written confirmation.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So then, just so we're careful on this one, these motions are both based on the fact of, on the approval of the hospital and agreeing to these? All right, if they don't, then we'll bring it back. Is that clear?
They already, they already agreed.
I don't know if they agreed to this language, did they?
Yeah.
In writing?
They have, they have agreed to the language, to the modification, yes.
All right, all right, go forward then. Our stuff. Sherry, let's take up your, the item on, that the chief's been waiting around for, ambulance fund.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't go into a lot of details. We do do this twice a year. We have to bring the write-offs to the board to have those officially written off. We do send them to a third-party collection, so this is not the last step. We do receive thirty to forty thousand a year in receivables after we write these off. So this, for this six-month period, we're looking at five hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-seven cents in write-offs.
Does anybody have any questions for Sherry? Okay. Go ahead.
On the third paragraph under background issues, you're saying that NBF gives us thirty percent, but it's the other way around.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting to fix that.
Yeah.
Very sorry.
You want, would you like a copy of this? You want me to email this to you for later?
No, I will go back to the office and fix it today.
Thank you. That's it.
And Sean, obviously, the total amount of revenue is up, but the bad debt write-off is up by about five percentage points this year.
Yes.
And do you have any thoughts on that, on why it's up? We have been trending down over the last five years, but this year now, we're, we're back up a little bit.
Yes, Sean Slaman, Fire Chief, for the record. So we have been in contact with Whitman, who is our private biller. The increase that we're seeing in is, is really twofold. It all falls back to no responses and no contacts. So people are not, we either don't have valid addresses for them, or they're not returning phone calls or answering phone calls to us. A large portion of it is people that don't have a fixed address, that are either homeless, that live in long-term stay hotels, motels, and move on, and so they're difficult to contact and get back in touch with. And then another portion is, there is, there are insurance companies that pay their client the ambulance fees, or the medical fees, and then it is up to, there's two sets. One, they will pay direct to us, and then there's a deductible still owed, and the client does not pay the deductible, or they are paying the customer the amount, and then it is up to the customer to pay us, and they are not responding to Whitman's calls, and so that is turned over to collections. What we are, from a larger perspective, looking at the last several fiscal years, we are averaging about nine percent in the uncollectibles, and Whitman's average for other departments, for other agencies, runs in the ten to twelve percent range, so, which they said is actually a decent range from their perspective. So while it stings, and it's a significant amount of money, and something we're watching from that increase level, we are better than many other agencies.
So the two items that you mentioned, though, transient population and non-responsive insurance, have those changed in the last one to two years? Because wouldn't those be also issues in, say, twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen?
We have not, I have not noticed a significant change in, in that level, so that is just the answer we're getting from our biller, that it is non-responses.
Yeah, it's just, it's interesting, because if that hasn't changed, that's always been the same situation, but yet the bad debt is up this year, then that's not the, that's not the actual problem. The problem is something else, either an increase in transient population or homeless population, or an increase in the amount of non-responsive insurance calls. If possible, could you kind of dig into that with them a little bit, and just bring that back to us at a later date, so that we know?
That's exactly what we have done already. We've, we've requested that Whitman give a more detailed report and dig in a little bit deeper, and that we would return that back to finance and to the board.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I was just kind of.
Let's go Glory first, and then Stacy.
So part of it might be, because I was just taking a quick perusal through this, is I see some back twenty-eighteen dates, so there could have been some missed accounts that you didn't write off in the normal course of when you'd be getting them, because I can see three hundred, two hundred, fourteen hundred, eighteen hundred, sixteen hundred. I can see some older claims sitting here that might attribute to part of the, whoops, here's some golden oldies that we need to just go ahead and clean up, and so they may have done that, too, which makes it look like there's more write-offs than normal, because they cleaned up some back records. But the other question I have, too, is how much do we ever recover, because these are put on their records for this bad debt, how much do we ever get in an uncollectible that comes back and we reinstate? Do we get a little bit of that, too?
Well, we get thirty to, thirty, actually, it's thirty to, we actually received sixty thousand this year.
In the ones that were written off that we reversed?
And we collected, right.
It's the last, last line of the background analysis.
Yeah.
So year-to-date this year, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars?
Yeah.
Not bad.
And these are, these are, the collectibles you're looking at today are deemed uncollectible in that six-month period. So they could have gotten responses from this person back from eighteen and been trying to collect, but then they lost them, and.
Has no response, but that's beside the.
Because they had none, so.
Well, yeah, that's maybe why they were deemed uncollectible, is the last six months they have gotten no response. So.
Go ahead, Stacy.
You know, some, I mean, just to that point, sometimes someone's on a payment plan, and they pay twenty dollars a month, and then they stop, and then, then they don't collect, or they pass away. But, but two comments I wanted to make. One, you know, if you get a transient individual who gets sick, the department can incur a lot of costs, because that person will get a lot of transports, and could rack up easily ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars worth of bills over the course of a month even, maybe two months. And the other comment I wanted to make, and the only reason I know this is because my daughter bought health insurance through the exchange this year because of her job transition component, and the insurance company, the only insurance company in Nevada that's providing through the exchange, is one of those companies that will, will not pay the provider, but will pay the individual for services provided, like an ambulance service. And so if, if that's the only, that could be, so I just wanted to mention that to you. I don't know if you knew that. I would not have known it had my daughter not, so I don't want to mention that company, but they, they are the ones that don't pay the provider. And when I was still with the city, we tried to get legislation changed at NAC with the Insurance Commissioner's Office to force payment to the provider, and we couldn't get that regulation through.
Any other questions on this item? And Dan, since the mayor stepped out, we can take a vote with, not a reduced quorum, but just, is he just going to be an abstention?
No, it would not be an abstention. He's just absent, but we do have a quorum of four, and so you can proceed with the vote if you would like.
Okay. Accept the motion at this time?
Yeah, I move to accept the application of the bad debt as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so the vote is four, zero, and one absent. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item fifteen B for possible action, discussion of possible action regarding a plan of expenditure for ten million, two-hundred, eleven thousand, four-hundred, fifteen dollars that the state of Nevada has granted to Carson City through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Sherry?
Thank you. Yeah, this is actually more of a preliminary plan of expenditure. We had to submit this to the state in order to get our first half of the CARES Act money. So we did present this to the state already, and we've received the first half of the dollars. However, this, once we get the final nonprofits and who are paying them, on August twentieth, I'll bring a final plan of expenditure back. But I wanted you to be aware that this is what went to the state, and then there is a breakout of the costs, kind of for the city and the school district and the hospital, per their plans. And then, if you approve this preliminary plan, I was going to award the hospital and the school district their dollars. It's kind of a timing issue. They want the six-thirty costs from March to June. They want that submitted by September first. So we're all scrambling to get numbers together to get that reimbursement request into them. So that's kind of where we are with this CARES funding.
Questions or discussion?
So just clarifying, so we got five million of the ten million. So on the school district in Carson Tahoe, are you recommending that those get their half to make an easy draw, or you're going to make them prove up expenditures by date?
No, I'm recommending we give them, we award their half, but all of this is going to be done on a reimbursement basis. So they need to get us their costs by September first. The final plan of expenditure is also, we can submit that on September first and get the second half of our money. So my plan is to bring that final expenditure back to you August twentieth, so we can submit it on September first, and then there'll be a very short timeframe. And I don't, I do not expect them to submit all of this money for March through June. In fact, the school district told me they don't have any expenses for March through June already. The hospital does, but it's only, it's probably half.
So should this then say that we would award seven hundred and, whatever it is, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand to Carson City School District, and nine hundred and twenty-five thousand to Carson Tahoe?
I would rather, I would rather award the whole amount, because the timing difference is so minuscule.
Right.
Like, we'll have the full amount of money.
I understand that, but I don't think that's what you said.
It isn't, but I'm like, okay, wait a second.
Well, that's what Lori's questioning.
You said give them half.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't. I said I expect the reimbursement request from the hospital to be about half. But I would like to award the grant.
And you're saying just half through June thirtieth?
Yes.
Because then they have the other expenses from July.
You're going to set it up as, so you want this as a grant award, and then they will give you reimbursement draws, but they won't exceed half until we get the other half of money. That's what I was going for. You only have five million.
And that's my, that's what I think is going to happen, is it definitely won't be more than half through six-thirty.
It is, it'll be a drawdown on the grant.
I would like to award the whole thing, just so we don't have to have several awards, and then it gets confusing.
But if the school district lays it all out right now, July.
There's still enough. It's three and a half million total out of. It's three and a half million total out of 5 million.
No, it just means we wait then to reimburse ourselves.
Well, but like I said, I'm expecting to submit that final plan of expenditure September 1st and then we'll get the second half of our money. So I really think the timing difference is short enough that we're not going to be, you know, using general fund funds to fund any of this. It'll all be CARES funded. We'll have the money in the bank.
You, you could actually submit it after that second meeting, what is it, August 20th?
Um, I think they said the earliest we could submit that second plan of expenditure was September 1st.
Okay, I thought it was, um, that was the latest we could submit it.
Oh.
Anyway, I think it, it only took a few days since we submitted that initial plan to get the money.
To get the money.
Yeah, to get the money, yeah.
Just go, sorry. Two things. First, I wanted to bring up that at our NACO meeting on Friday, we, um, we approved the, um, a contract with a nonprofit to distribute funds. And I know we, as a body, have decided not to do that, but I just, I wanted to bring that up in case anyone had to change, um, the, the agreement that we made with this nonprofit to distribute funds. And I think there's something like 12 counties that are doing it. Um, don't hold me to that number. Uh, they get 5%, which is an allowable expense according to the CARES Act, and NACO will get 1%. So it's 6% off of that. So if we did the 1 million instead of buying PPE and decided to do small business assistance, that's, that would be the fund. I just wanted to point that out. The other question I wanted to mention, or the other thing I wanted to ask is, has someone looked into buying a million dollars' worth of PPE? And are we going to be able to, are you going to be able to do that by the end of the year as required? Because I, I'm telling you, I can't, I still can't find it, um, for my business. So I just, I wanted to ask that question. Do we feel confident that we'll be able to spend a million dollars in PPE by the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, there, the only thing that, that we're aware of there being a big shortage on is gloves. Um, masks are in abundance and, and other things. So we've definitely got, I know Darren and, and Public Works is working with three different vendors, getting quotes and bids and everything we need to do.
Okay.
Um, to, to make that happen.
Okay, great.
And then that also includes sanitation supply?
Yep.
Yeah.
And hand sanitizer.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure we could spend the money.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you. Okay.
And we did already, just to let you guys know, we did already put the nonprofit, um, out there and, uh, the due date was this last Wednesday and we got 1.4 million dollars in requests.
Four million?
So we're going, 1.4 million. So we're going to, um, look at those requests and bring a recommendation back on August 20th as well, so we can nail that down.
Well, it's good to be able to do this, even though it might not cover everything. It's good to do it. And my hat's off to you folks for putting this together in short order and getting a state to come on board with this here. So further to comment, discussion on this item before we vote?
In the motion, the way it's written, um, i- is there a reason we're calling out those amounts? Why, why wouldn't we just say, "I move to approve the plan of expenditure"? I'm just curious why it was written that way.
Uh, just because I want to award those, those funds now instead of waiting until the final plan. So, um, if you're all okay with that, then, um, I'm fine with just approving the plan. As long as everybody's aware, I'm going to award those.
I think because those are outside entities in that we're actually going to give them like a subrecipient award.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, let's try a motion. Okay. I move to approve the preliminary plan of expenditure and award $1,550,000 to the Carson City School District, $1,850,000 to the Carson Tahoe Hospital, and $200,000 to Eagle Valley Care Center, with the balance of the final plan of expenditure coming back to us at the August 20th Board of Supervisors meeting for approval.
For a second to that.
Yeah, just for, on discussion, because he said, um, the preliminary plan, is this not a plan of expenditure and then you're going to amend the plan of expenditure in September to be a final?
We can say that, yeah.
Because I was just trying to remember in the CARES Act, I was running through and-
Yeah, the state wanted a plan of expenditure before they would release the first half.
Right, so I don't know that we want to-
So it was-
It's the first plan of expenditure.
Well, it's kind of a preliminary plan because-
Okay, I just want to make sure the language isn't going to mess up anything and we take any money back.
I don't think, I think that's fine. Um, I do worry, though, we've kind of given departments go-ahead to move forward with like the Plexiglas, because it's really hard to, um, you know, everybody's doing Plexiglas projects right now. So we've given them the go-ahead to start those and get them in the works, um, as well as buying PPE and all that. So do you want us to stop all that until August 20th? The way that the motion, or is the city allowed to continue to spend the money?
Well, the funds are there, so I don't know why we wouldn't.
Okay.
Just go.
Right. I just, okay, the way that it was worded, that we'd bring all the other expenses back.
Well, that's why I asked the question about why you were calling those others out and not just saying, "We approve the plan of expenditure", because it almost implied to me that you didn't want to spend city money yet by looking at that.
Oh, yeah, no. Sorry.
You can spend the 5 million that you have in hand.
Okay, perfect.
I think that's what the motion says. We can leave the word preliminary under plan of expenditure. I don't listen to the debate and I don't know that it's a big deal for us to deal with that. So, uh, preliminary is fine because we know another 5 million's coming. All right. All right. There's, is there a second then? I don't hear a second.
I second.
Okay. We'll discuss, there's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Anybody? Don't hear any, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carrie, thank you again, Sherry.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Oh, it's afternoon now. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Had to see if it was morning or afternoon. So for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. What we've got before you is the, um, the standard, or the guidelines and standards for human services. And we've made some edits and I'll just, uh, go through real briefly and tell you what edits we've done. And, um, and this includes a proposed fee increase for, of, um, up to $650 is a staff recommendation to be paid for funeral homes for each indigent cremation or burial service. So some of the, um, minor edits that we did, um, with the document, we used this time to do formatting edits. Um, we added a, the city divi- definition on page four. All references to division were changed to human services division. We added clarifying language such as added manager in various places. Um, and CCHS procedures, that describes an internal human services document. Uh, we changed reference from CCHS policies and procedures to CCHS procedures for consistency. And on, um, we did add, um, as a suggestion to, um, have a, uh, review and approval subsection under section one, the introduction. So that would, um, and the suggestion was to be reviewed and approved by the Board of Supervisors at least every three years. Um, we did remove the reference to Carson City Municipal Code. That, um, section of code is very outdated and it doesn't reflect the current human services structure. So, um, within that was, uh, replacement with NRS 428.010. And then on page nine, we revised the real property section. On page, um, 11B5, uh, let's see here. Okay, page 11B5, I'm not seeing, oh, yes, on the top of the page. We, um-
Nikki, go back to page nine, would you please?
Sure.
On the real property?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I don't understand. I think you're missing an apostrophe S or something. Any real property owned by the applicant that is not the applicant? What are we doing there?
Yeah, we do need to have an apostrophe S there. And, yep, got it. So thank you, we'll make that edit. Any other?
Keep going.
Okay. So like I said, on, um, page 11, up at the top, responsible relatives. We were, were aligning with the NRS. Spouse was added and brother and sisters removed. On page 14, under, um, A4 and then the small a, we removed the CCHS specific workforce program and made that more general, too, so it could include any workforce program. And, um, same thing with, um, on same page, A4, small b, we added workforce program, so it could be any workforce program. Um, we added it there instead of just having only work search. On page 17, we removed, um, this is 46B, we removed outdated language. On page 19, and that is 52, um, the eligibility criteria, we added language to reflect what the current practice is. And then, um, page 19, 53, this, um, was the main reason that, um, we started looking at this entire document and decided to do a, uh, amendment or edits to it. But this is the, uh, the cremation or burial rate. We do have in there 650 and that's, of course, um, your decision of what you want to do on that. Um, page 20, uh, now, item 5.10, we removed that language and then renumbered. And then we have the, um, there we have the new 510, and that further explains 5.3 authorization rates. We, um, did revise that sentence, um, to, um, read that Carson City residents who expire in another Nevada county or out of state, the Carson City residents, that's the title, and then, um, Carson City residents, again, who expire in another Nevada county or out of state, may qualify for Carson City payment of burial or cremation services. And so that just explains that. So that is the overall changes that we did and then the specifics that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Who helped you draft this? Who's the lawyer that did it?
Karen Beck here, and she was a great help with this. So I'm very thankful for her helping us with it.
Good. All right, folks, you ready to do this one?
Quick question. On C, um, sorry, on, uh, page 6, 3.2C, um, emergency medical treatment, would that include prehospital care? Or could we add language to allow it to include prehospital? No, I'm talking about ambulance ride.
Do you see where he's-
Sure, should we define that? Should we, because someone could get a helicopter ride, for instance, which is significant, you know, could be $30,000.
Mary Jane Ostrander, Human Services Division Manager. The, um, emergency medical treatment that we have, um, authorized in the past has been like ER visits if the person is uninsured. Um, it can also, um, include, um, a life-saving surgery at times, um, or testing. Um, it has to be, um, a, a high-risk loss of life in order for us to be able to do an approval. Now, with the ACA now in place, the, um, we haven't seen very many applications for this because having insurance today is a prior resource. And if they can qualify for our assistance, most likely they would qualify for Medicaid and Medicaid will pay back, um, three months from the day of, date of application. So, um, so we don't see very many of these. Can it include an, um, inpatient stay?
No, that wasn't my question at all. My question was ambulance service, prehospital care. Not in-hospital care, prehospital care.
Adding the, or emergency medical services provider, it could.
As, as long as it counts that, that's, that's all I was curious about. Thank you.
And, and again, we would encourage them to apply for Medicaid before we did that. And if, if they didn't qualify, then we would go ahead and pick it up.
Lori, you have questions?
It might just be my reeniorer question, but if I look at, uh, page 19 in the packet or 523 in our packet, um, when I look at authorized rates, I'm not sure why it's in 5.3 at the top, because the rates are the cremation stillborn, blah, 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 blah. That top sentence, isn't that 5.10? What, why is that repeated? I, I guess I'm trying to understand the need for the sentence at 5.3, because the, the rates are A, B, C, D. And 5.10 covers, if you don't die in Carson City, that's the rate you get or the lesser of. So just, we can definitely combine those. Strike it out of the 5.3 and leave it in 510, right? Okay. Just thought, you guys did such a good cleanup job and I thought, oops.
Yeah.
We duplicated.
Yeah, we can, so what we'll do is strike it out, like you suggested, strike it out of 5.3.
Right.
And then leave it in 510.
Perfect.
All right. Any other questions at this panel? Anybody? Sean?
Just one. It says 25 years and on the increase. And you think this is warranted, I assume?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question? I didn't hear.
After the review, of course, is this reasonable?
Cremations. Cremations, the cost is going up. Okay.
Um, you know, they haven't been increased in, um, yeah, 25, 27 years that I'm aware of. So in that sense, it does make sense to increase. Um, on the other hand, our surrounding counties or our, our comparable counties have not increased. And, um, you know, Marshall County, um, in the last three years, just increased from 530 a month to 588. Douglas is also at the 550. When you go out to Lyon County, they're at a higher rate of, um, or 995, no, yeah, 995. However, a lot of that is because of transportation. They don't have a crematorium in their county. So anybody that they have has to be transported to a place. And, and that, that's happening across the state. A lot of your smaller counties are paying higher because of transportation. Our eastern counties are having to transport to Salt Lake City. So, you know, they, they do pay higher rates. So, yeah, so.
They've been asking for this for the last 10 years that I know of. They've been asking for this for the last 10 years that I know of. Maybe 11, 12 now. They've been asking for it a long time. Frankly, I don't think it's out of line. It's probably...it's under market...it's under...
Way under market.
It's under the regular markets, I think. Brad?
Yeah, and even with the increase, then the funeral homes will still be taking a loss on these. However, just to put this on the record, and Sherry can confirm it, but it will require an augmentation to the budget because we did not budget for this item. And I believe it's about 90, almost $9,300.
You shaking your head in it, Sherry?
Yes.
Your answer is yes, it would, budget augmentation.
There's funding and other line items in that welfare budget, so it's not really going to increase the welfare department budget. It just transfers from another line item.
Okay.
I had asked the question, Dancy, and I don't know if you got an answer of the approximately 50... You indicate there's about 50 that are a year that are indigent burials that get that rate that we're discussing right now. What percentage of the on-call cases does that 50% represent? Does my question make sense? In other words, the funeral homes are obviously subsidizing this. And I'm wondering if...at what percentage are they subsidizing it?
I don't have that information.
Okay. I mean, if there's...if they each...if there are 200 cases every year and 50 of them are indigents, then I guess, you know, things are probably working out okay. But if of the on-call pickup cases that they get, if they only have 70 a year and 50 of them are indigents, then I would be in favor of raising this as opposed to just giving them 650. So...
Well, I can say that the total indigent burials we had for 2019 was 45. 2018, it was 69. In 2017, it was 58.
Yeah, I got that. That number I got.
So, I mean, that...but I don't know how many non-indigent.
Yeah, but you need the other number to know whether, you know...I mean, if they're...like I said, if they're...I don't know. It's their responsibility to supplement our indigent account. You know, unless it...it is a voluntary program, though. I guess there's that. But if all of them decided they weren't going to do it, then where would we be?
Raise the rate.
We'd be raising the rate. We would be.
But, you know...
So, the market drives the rate, huh? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if you raise the rate now, the market's just going to suck that right up.
Okay, okay.
Whatever it was today is going to be...market rates tomorrow, higher. Okay. All right. Go, Brad, I'm sorry.
So, there is a sheet attached to the Autumn Funeral and Cremation Letter that shows the cost of direct cremation. But it varies widely from $920 per cremation all the way up to $2,480, depending on the funeral home. So, that in itself, I mean, I don't know that we need to be responsible for fixing the cost of services for the funeral home. If one funeral home can do it for $920 per cremation, I don't understand why another is $2,480. So, you know, I think what we have to look at is, what is a reasonable amount? And I don't disagree with you that, you know, the funeral homes are still going to be subsidizing the cost.
Yeah, just...I guess I would say that some of the funeral homes in town are part of a larger conglomerate of funeral homes. And so, it's a little bit easier for them to absorb that cost versus a smaller mom-and-pop shop, as an example.
You would think that, but when you look at the numbers, it's the exact opposite.
Well, yeah.
They...one of the...they own their own cremation services, so they don't have to pay a third party for that component. Not all funeral homes own their own crematory. So, there's...they're paying somebody else the fee. But anyway, I think the 650 is fine. I think it's fair. And 25 years, we haven't given them an increase. We need to shoulder the portion of our burden. So, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Now, I've lost Kate. We don't have a...we have a motion?
Nope.
All right. Motion...motion's in order.
I move to approve the guidelines and standards as revised with the late material that was received.
Is there a second to that? Wait, Brad?
Oh, is there something else? Oh, and the change that you're going to strike out and correct on 5.3 as discussed on the record.
Good catch.
The answer to the motion is to approve the changes, with the exception...not with the exception, but... that's just what it is. We're going to approve the increase in burial fees, cremation fees?
Yes, that's in the guidelines that were revised.
All right.
And 5.3, correction.
All right, I still don't have... Is there a second? Okay, discussion? I hear none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Who is the no? Stacy, I can't hear. Okay. Pass is 401. Supervisor Chilby is a no. Okay. All right. You guys want to take a break? You want to hear what's going on on COVID? All right.
It'll be October. I know that from...
Ready? Okay, so this is the financial piece of the COVID update. You'd asked me to come in and report on the E.C. taxes at the first meeting of every month. I do email out that information to the board, but for the public, taxable sales were actually up 23% with actual dollars coming in increased 22.6% for May, and that's fiscal year 20 May over the previous 2019, which is incredible. So, for the year, we're up 7.52% and we increased, per the budget, 2.5%. So, I can't believe this isn't some kind of error, and it's going to be corrected in June, so I'm trying not to get overly excited about this. But I can't believe our sales taxes increased that high. Just...I did a few other little things. Gas taxes for 256 Fund, which actually has some sales taxes in there. It's up 2.1%. 250 Fund, I'm sorry, that's...the 256 Fund is streets maintenance. And then, the RTC Fund, which only has gas taxes, is actually down 4.5...4.9%. So, almost 5%. And Darren's very aware, and they're watching what they're spending in that fund. The other one that's down quite a bit is business licenses. They're down 32%. This is a huge economic indicator. So, I'm very concerned about that number. I'm hoping it has something to do with the Intergov system, and we just haven't collected it yet. But I'm not sure.
And I think what we're seeing is that a lot of businesses tried to go online and get the business license initially, back in January, February, March, and couldn't do it because the system crashed. And then, they never went back.
Yeah, and I know Hope and Lee have both been trying desperately to get this money in. So, they're trying to call businesses and get this...get the licenses renewed. So, I do hope that will go up. Parks and Recs is down 30% because we basically closed everything, and we've opened it very minimally. And we probably expect to keep it open this minimally for a little bit of time, probably most of the summer. However, that only equates to $300,000. So, it's a large percentage, but it's really $300,000 in revenue. I did look at expenses real quick. Our original budget showed 85 million dollars in expenses is what we were planning on spending. To date, and we're still expecting some invoices to come in. We always get them through, you know, August 31st. But to date, our expenses are 83 million. So, looks like we're about $2 million ahead of the curve ball on there on expenses. You have any questions financially?
Questions?
I will turn it over to...
I just don't believe it yet.
I know, I know, I know. I'll turn it over to Nikki then. Thank you.
It seems to be that, you know, maybe...we can't really tell what's happening on the sales tax side, but it seems to be, you know, if you push... we now see what happens if you push a trillion dollars out of the economy. What could happen if you've got an efficiently-run government where you're not paying last year's bills this year? Where you're up to date? This is a big...this is a big deal now. What happens after this runs out? It's out now, but I think, you know, we're going to be some back. Don't know what, but we're going to...we'll have to wait for another month or two months to really see the effect of what's going on here. Okay. All right.
Okay, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. So, I'm going to give you just some updates department-wide, and then I'll let Jeannie drill into the other items. So, just an update on getting our extra space. You all did approve the lease. And we...IT has finished their portion. Furniture is on order. And so, hopefully, we'll get it next week. And moving forward on that, we did come to the conclusion that having the disease investigators, the monitors, and the call center was too much for that office space. So, Parks and Rec have generously given us a room over on their facility. There's going to have to be some...a little bit of remodeling to it, but that's where our call center will be. It will be on the Public Works campus in a Parks and Rec building. We did receive the epidemiology lab capacity grant, or you'll hear us say the ELC grant. It's the enhancing detection. This is our larger grant that we were waiting for. I will bring that back. I'm bringing it at the August 20th meeting just to tell you what we got. And I also plan to show you how we're leveraging employees with that grant and some of the other funding we have. So, we're continuing to hire individuals. Right now, individuals working on this either as a full-time or part-time status. We're looking at 49 to 50 people. And the range of the 49 to 50 is because when we go out and test in these different locations, we do ask that the counties contribute some of their employees. And so, we ask for seven to eight people, depending on the testing event. We are looking to hire nine to 15 more individuals. One thing that...we were lucky to have the National Guard assisting us as of right now, as of the 31st. We don't...no longer have that. They helped us with the testing events. They also...we had two and a half FTEs that were helping us with the monitoring and the negative callbacks. So, losing the guard personnel at this point has really made an impact on our operations. We're waiting to hear more. The guard there will be coming back from the state point of...or from the state, and we're waiting to find out what their mission is at this point. So, with that, if you've got any questions overall for me, I'll let Jeannie.
Anybody have any questions for Nikki? All right.
I'll still be here, too.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Jeannie Freeman for the record. Just wanted to give you...apologize for missing a couple of weeks ago. Needed to have that mental break for myself and my family to be able to reset and be able to come back and be as effective as I have been in the past. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update over what our numbers have looked like for the last two weeks and then talk to you about some of the things that we've been doing and some of the things that are on the horizon for us as it relates to COVID as well as other community outreach. So, from July 20th to August 2nd, that's the two weeks that ended this last Sunday, we had 195 new cases in the Quad County region. The average age was 44 years of age, with the range being between three years of age and 98 years of age. We had 12 that were hospitalized, and we had three deaths. You may inquire as to why I am looking at those two weeks. We're going to continue to work along the same types of week frames that the state is working on when it comes to their reporting of data, and we want to make sure that we're able to provide that picture. To take that data from the Quad Counties and put it into the Carson City numbers, of those 195 cases, 69 of them were Carson City residents. So, just about 35%. The average age of our Carson City residents that contracted COVID was almost 38 years of age, with the range being between three years of age and 77 years of age. Four of our Carson City residents were hospitalized during that time, and two of them passed away. Of those that reported their ethnicity when it came to their positive tests, about 33% of them identified as Hispanic Latino. When it comes to some of the exposure data that we found, we did find that, based on our surveys and our investigations, about 52% of the residents in the Quad Counties, so a little over 105, I think it was 105, had identified that they had had contact with somebody who had also tested positive. Now, whether or not that meant that they had contact with them while they were symptomatic or something, but they did know that they had contact with somebody who was positive. Additionally, we found that of the 195 cases, we had about 37 of them, or almost 20%, that had reported that they had traveled to another state within the 14 days of becoming positive. So, we're still continuing to ask those travel questions. We do ask the international travel. We didn't have anybody over the two weeks that had done international travel, but we did have...oh, I apologize. We did have about 5% that had not reported, so we're unsure. But we do know that people are still traveling out of state and potentially contracting and bringing it back and so forth. We do find...we've had some issues within the Quad County region of having some positives within some long-term care facilities, skilled nursing facilities, so we're continuing to work with those agencies. As we all heard earlier this week, the Governor's Office rolled out their new plan to eliminate phases and to go with a different approach. We're waiting for some additional clarification on some of that as all jurisdictions are, but we do anticipate that to be coming. But based on what was put out and what the plan was released, we are looking at some of the data that we collect and looking at how we might need to put some additional information or some additional detail with that and looking at what the state is also asking to collect. We're also leaning forward and anticipating what sort of data the state may be requesting of us when it comes to schools and the schools opening and how we will be collaborating with the schools, which we have been doing for the last several weeks as they've been developing their reopening plans. We have collaborated with all four of them, actually, on different levels of their request and then leaning into some of the information that is there. We were notified, or we did hear this morning, that Washoe County School District has made a change in how they're going to be approaching their education and no longer offering an in-person experience for at least a while and going to fully online. So, we're not sure of how that's going to potentially change in our area and the region that we serve. But we are leaning forward as to if we are having an in-person experience, what some of that data is that we'll be collecting and what we'll be reporting to the state. We have two to three testing events every week that are scheduled throughout the region, and we continue to partner. The schools have been incredible. Carson City School District has been incredible with assisting us in having the Carson High parking lot to be able to use. And we did an event earlier there this week. We did about a little over 310 tests. One of the things that we are also leaning into is the importance of flu season. Every year, the flu pushes our healthcare system to a level where we are kind of on that verge of... we always call it a medical surge, but we always see that there's some challenges. So, we have some additional funding that we're anticipating to be coming, and we haven't received it yet to do enhanced flu outreach. And we are expanding our collaboration with other partners across the Quad County region in addition to what we've typically done with schools where we've gone into school. in, in addition to what we've typically done with schools where we've gone into schools. We will not be doing that this year. We have to change how our operations are. And we had some plans laid out and then the CDC released some guidance yesterday that totally eliminated our plans. So, we were back to the drawing board and we were about a month out from flu season beginning. So, it is just what it is and we continue to adapt and overcome and adapt and overcome and adapt and overcome.
Jeannie, have you looked at what impact the public wearing masks will have on the upcoming flu season? Because I would assume that it will, should greatly reduce the transmission of the flu just like it, it does the coronavirus.
Sure. Great question. So, I mean, we would anticipate that we could see some of that. You know, we didn't see the second surge last spring with flu and people anticipated that that was because we had the stay-at-home orders and people were not in close proximity. So, it's potential that it could reduce the impact of flu. I don't want to make any presumptive ideas as to what that might look like, but it will be something that we're doing our disease surveillance on to see, you know, with people have. We are waiting to get the confirmation from the Nevada State Public Health Lab. There's a new swab that has been developed and they're intending to validate it. And it is a swab, it's a single one that allows us to test for both influenza and COVID at the same time. And that allows us to potentially do some rule out, but then there could still be some other questions that we may call and ask people for. But keep in mind, when it comes to reporting of illness with flu, people report influenza-like illness symptoms. They don't actually report the confirmation of influenza. So, we'll watch that, but we don't have, we have not had a flu season in, that we've tracked in this kind of way where we've seen this kind of use of face covering. So, it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
Do you have more presentation?
I don't. I have, I now have room for your questions.
Any questions for Jeannie?
Yeah. Couple of days ago, our city manager appeared by Zoom with the Rotary Club and I was listening in and I asked her, because I had been out of, out of town, how the ordinance we passed regarding retail and restaurants, et cetera, outside was working. She said, "Seems to be going fine. We haven't heard much." And I assumed she meant from Health Department, Sheriff's Office, et cetera. How do you feel that's going? It, it just got started really, but, so we don't have the 14 days or we only have a little over that. But how does that seem to be working for you guys?
So, I will always do what I can to never put my personal feelings into a public meeting and into a discussion that is related to that because it's not appropriate for it. We will use the data to help us with that information. I do know that our environmental health folks have been, our EH team has been out there and been doing the education and so forth with our businesses and to help them along with that. But we are waiting on that data. We certainly don't have that timeframe window of that data at this point to help us know what that is. One of the things about the data is that it is hard to truly separate that that one factor made all the difference within a community in the midst of other changes that are happening at the same time. So, it will be important for us to kind of look at it over time. Even if we do come back in two weeks and we have data that would have given us 14 days, I cannot give a valid report that would say that we could show whatever changes there is related to that one factor being modified.
Thank you.
I also talked to Lee Supervisor Barrett and he said there was just one business that had done an application to do that outdoor dining.
How are we doing on meeting the Governor's new criteria? Do we fit, not fit? We're going to be targeted? What's going on?
So, we are actually waiting for some additional information about those calculations or the statistics because the Governor's Office was able to recognize through collaborating with counties and through other areas that potentially the numbers that they were looking at and how those calculations were, were not aligning with other states and how they were doing those calculations and may not be actually showing the picture the same way that they believed it was. And so, as with anything, numbers and statistics, we need to make sure that we're getting it right. And I believe that they are definitely much closer to that in looking at those numbers and doing those calculations. And so, when you looked at and it came out from the COVID Response Coordinator, Caleb Cage, just a couple of days ago, when him and Julia did their daily press briefing, that they were going to be updating the dashboard with the new way that they were going to be calculating things. And that did change how our daily positivity rate as a state and how those positivity rates for counties were going to be reported. And so, that dashboard is being updated. So, it's important for the public and for everyone, when you look at that dashboard and go, "Well, look at how much we dropped" or "Look at how much we increased." We need to be conscientious that when things started new on August, what, 4th or 3rd, whatever Monday was after, what was it? Because it was Tuesday. When they started new, you have to look at things new from that point forward. You can't compare Friday of this week to Friday of last week because the numbers are different, because they're calculating them differently.
When are we going to know that? I mean, I guess the Governor, I mean, because the Governor said at his press conference, I guess, Monday night, that, you know, "If we don't meet those criteria, that we could be targeted for individual businesses or whatever here."
Correct.
In the county.
Correct.
So, that's off the table until they revise the numbers? Am I hearing that right?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that's off the table. And, and I think that it's important, at least what I heard during the President, during the Governor stuff and in reading the new plan, is that it's, it's meant to be much more collaborative with counties and not as punitive as it has been potentially perceived in the past. So, the idea is, is that every Thursday, as Mr. Cage outlined, is every Thursday, they're going to have their group that gets together and they're going to look at those numbers. And then when they, when they look at those three statistical numbers and the other factors that are in place, if a county is on the yellow list or is highlighted, that there's going to be a conversation that happens. They're going to be reached out to and said, "Hey, you're on the list. Want you to know and this is where you're on the list for." And then if the following Thursday, if that county is still on the list, then they're going to, the Governor's Office is going to reach out again and say, "What can we do?" Or, "What are you doing to address and how can we talk about this collaboratively?" Because counties can then look at their numbers and say, "Well, we had 50 new cases in that two-week period, but 40 of them were in a single long-term care facility." So, that, that puts a different context. It adds more to the story, not just the numbers, not just the data that's there. And that it's not meant to just be a fail-swoop of, "We're going to shut everything down." But having the counties work together with the Governor's Office to talk with those entities and talk with those businesses and say, "Is there something that we can do to support you so that this isn't occurring or this isn't creating a problem?" It's not meant to be a target. I really feel like that was taken out of, and here I am doing my feelings again, but when I read the plan that was released by the Governor's Office, it was to take out that target idea and was to take out that element of just shutting down a whole county, but looking more at, "Is there a type of industry that needs to have more education or more collaboration? Or is there a certain business that needs to have more education and more collaboration?"
Do we know, I, I don't know if you could tell us or not. I'm always wondering whether there's something HIPAA-related or some other issue. But do we know if there's any of our businesses or groups that are out of whack with the restaurant, say masking and social distancing or being the generator of the majority of, of our positive rates?
Sure.
Do we know that?
Sure. So, we actually do collect information about where positives work. We collect information about whether or not they're wearing face coverings while they're at work. We collect a lot of that information during the investigative process. And to be honest, we do have within, I'm going to say within the region because I don't have them identified by the city that they're in. Within the region, we have a couple of places that have a little bit greater number or higher number of people who are showing positive. It's important for us to not just make some fail-swoop assumptions that because they're all working at the same place, they all got it at the workplace. They may be friends who all happen to work at the same place and maybe they got it because they had a party last weekend and not necessarily due to the workplace. And so, that's why the new plan is designed to be more collaborative with leadership and not just heavy-handed of they're making decisions, but then what are we doing to support? And that, because we have those relationships in our local jurisdictions with our businesses. And so, it's important for us to have that. They are still going to have OSHA. State OSHA is still going to be integral and people should still, if they have concerns, should still put their concerns out to State OSHA and, and to report that. But OSHA is also not automatically, once they get a, a report, shutting something down. They're making, they're asking for feedback, they're asking for input and then they're making their determinations based on what's there.
All right. Thank you.
And I am aware that, you know, OSHA has been in our community and finding different businesses. Individuals can either make a report directly to OSHA or if they do it through our hotline, then that information is passed on to OSHA along with if there's any restaurants or food establishments, then we will have our environmental health specialists go out and see what's going on and see if we can assist.
Have we done that?
Gone out to...
Have we actually done that? Gone out to the property?
Oh, yeah.
Gone out to the business?
Mm-hmm.
Who, who, who in your shop does that?
All of our inspectors, the four environmental health inspectors. So, and, you know, we have jurisdiction over Douglas County and Carson City. So, yes, they go out and they will talk to the managers, the owners and give them suggestions. And so, that's happening on a regular basis.
I guess what I'm searching for is, are we doing all right in Carson City or do we need to do more? And I don't know if you could answer that, but I get, I get asked that a lot, you know? We're all wearing our masks, we're all doing social distancing. Is it having an effect in Carson City? Then they'll look at the, the report that comes out at 6 o'clock on the night or the day before and they'll see two or three or maybe a spike up to five and they'll see Douglas County going up to eight. Say, "What's going on? How come we're not making head growth, head road on, you know, progress on those?" And I don't know, I don't know if you know the answer, but I think a lot of people would like to know that answer.
So, Jeannie Freeman for the record, to, to respond to your inquiry, sir, we can take a look at the workplaces and the businesses that are being reported on the investigations with the positive cases. Most people, over 50% of them, as I was indicating earlier in Carson City, are getting it from somebody else that they had a positive contact with and most of them are reporting it that that was through social gatherings and through just common interactions with people, not necessarily because they were at a particular restaurant or a particular healthcare facility or something of that sort.
So, there's really no answer to that as to whether what we're doing is effective or not then? Is that right?
Well, I mean, I think, I think the message that we want to make sure that we're having is that you continue to wear your face coverings. If you're feeling off or you're not feeling well, don't go socialize with your friends. And, you know, when we have people who report that, "Yes, I wasn't feeling well and then I went to a baby shower or I went to a gender reveal party or I went to this kind of situation," you're taking, you're, you're putting somebody else at risk and you may have felt okay, but you felt a little different, you felt a little off. Don't go. It, I mean, those are, keep yourself apart. That's, that's the message that we continue to have.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Mayor, can I just add to that real quick? I, you know, I think the symptoms of this are so different, especially at the beginning, that it may not come on as a typical cold or a typical flu. So, Jeannie is right on when she says, you know, you know when you wake up in the morning or maybe in the afternoon, you're thinking to yourself, "Yeah, I don't feel right." That, that could be it. I mean, that's, that's how it started for me. And so, it, it's, it's not, there isn't a light that goes on, you know, on your iPhone that says, "Hey, you've got it." So, you really do have to listen to your body and, and isolate yourself, you know, at least until you can confirm that you don't have that, you know?
And Jeannie Freeman for the record, one other thing is, is that the signs and symptoms, they're not standard for everybody. Some people are going to have some of them and they're not going to have others and others will never have signs and symptoms and people keep looking for things like a fever. But you could have somebody who never has a fever. You could have somebody who is diagnosed with COVID and doesn't develop a fever until day nine. You know, it, there's no rhyme or reason as to the order of which it comes. It'd be nice if we'd be able to say, "Well, I had a sore throat and then my eyes started to water and then I had digestive issues and then I got a fever." But it doesn't go in that order. That would be nice and neat. That would make our life a whole lot easier. But it's not like that, unfortunately.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this panel?
You know, and I'll just add to, you know, Mayor, your question and add to what Jeannie had said about the social gatherings. You know, a lot of those spike, I don't really call them spikes, but increase in cases were due to the Fourth of July. And we could really see that map out, you know, that 14 days. So, come July 14th, I mean, we were seeing those increased cases. So, it's really important for people to keep that in mind, especially, you know, we're coming up on Labor Day. And so, it's important for the public to remember that.
All right. I have another question, but I'll take it online. It's fine. It's a bigger question, more generic. I'll tell you what, how do you know when we can relax around here? Do we know those numbers? Or would we never relax until somebody tells us, "You can relax"? Or we're going to be here for, for, we don't know?
We're going to be here for a while.
Relax is not in the vocabulary right now.
Well, I want to know whether you still know. All right. Thanks.
Sorry.
Tell your troops to, will you?
I feel like we're the Debbie Downers when we come in here at the end of a meeting. Let's close off your meeting with all the COVID stuff.
I know we have the DA next.
Keep going at it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
I, I just have a couple of things that I want to...
On this one?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, one of them is Stacy's question from before and I'm sorry that I didn't have it beforehand, but I emailed the sheriff about the on-call rotation pickups. And he says it's about 900 annually. And then they were saying about 50 were indigent. And then I just wanted to let you know, earlier on, well, when this first started, the COVID-19, that we had frozen some of our positions or just delayed hiring. So, given that we haven't sustained the significant losses that we had originally anticipated, I was going to go ahead and approve Public Works to move forward with filling their real property manager position. That position is critical for managing the South Carson Street, the Surplus Right-of-Way. So, they wanted to get started on, working on that. And then also, they'd be working on that easement right-of-way for that fourth leg of the Stewart Street roundabout through the US Forest Service property and, and just working on disposals of other city property that, that we feel was no longer needed for a public purpose. So, we were going to move forward with that. Another one was the natural resource specialist position in open space. That position is funded, you know, 100% by the restricted open space funds, which is the sales tax. And given that those haven't decreased like we had initially thought they would, we're going to go ahead and move forward with that, given just the, the large amount of usage that we're having in the open space properties. And then the last thing was, we have started moving forward with hiring seasonals just due to the reopening of our various facilities like the MAC and the pool and, and increasing some of our programs. So, we're looking at doing a full-day program through the community center. And also, they'll be starting latchkey, full-day program for the school-aged kids for the days that they're not in school. And that's all that I had.
That's going to be CARES Act?
Yes. Yeah. So, the, the full day, the latchkey is what we normally do, but for the full-day program, that would be covered under the CARES Act.
All right. Anything else from the board? Anybody? We ready for the go? Here the lawyers? All right, then.
A little picture with Ken that's been waiting out there.
Let's go do a picture right up there.
Yeah. Let's do that real quick so Ken can leave.
May I also ask, is, is there any reason why we can't take public comment and adjourn before we go to the closed meeting?
Yeah.
Says on there we can.
All right. We're up for public comment. Desi, you back there? Anybody?
I'm still here, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. I can't hear too well today.
There's, there's no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right. Going to ask one more time. Anybody out there who wants to get, add public comment? Okay, Dan, that's all right. All right. So, we'll shut off public comment then and we'll now move. Let's just take a, we now just take a little break. We could adjourn.
And then we'll meet with them and take the picture.
So, unless there's an objection, we'll stay... Dan, okay. So unless there's an objection, we'll stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors, which is coming up the second, third weekend, and third, Thursday in August. We're adjourned.